Mayor Danner, the public is in.
Thank you, Leah. I call this meeting to order of the City Council for the city of Gross Point Park. Clerk Lahut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Present.
Reed.
Here.
Haja.
Here.
Rapsen.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Fluid.
Here.
And Mayor Danner.
Here. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, and we have a representative with us that will give us a presentation. And for members of the public, I just want to remind those that as you join, make sure that your video is off and you remain muted until we get to public comment sections. With that, I believe, City Manager Sizeland, would you like to introduce our guest?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Danner. So before us tonight is Anthony Eid from the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. They're reaching out to communities to give a short presentation, and I'll go ahead and let Anthony take the floor.
Thank you, Nick. Hello, everyone. Can y'all hear me okay?
We can.
Wonderful. Well, my name's Anthony Eid, and I'm currently serving on the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. I'd like to first take this opportunity to thank Mayor Danner and all members of the City Council for giving us this opportunity to talk to y'all and try to inform the public of this historic commission. I have a little bit of a presentation here, so I'll go ahead and share my screen. Can you guys see this?
We can. We can.
Wonderful. So again, I'm Anthony. I'm currently residing in Detroit, Michigan. Been here for about the past 10 years, but I grew up in West Bloomfield, one of the suburbs of Metro Detroit. And the Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission started in 2018 when Michiganders voted to pass proposal to, to form a nonpartisan redistricting commission that are comprised of 13 randomly selected citizens. These 13 citizens consist of four Democrats, four Republicans, and five independents. I happen to be one of the independents on the commission. And we are tasked with drawing the redistricting maps for the US Congressional, Michigan House, and Michigan State Senate districts. As I'm sure all of you know, redistricting is done every 10 years, and it's done based on the US Census. So as part of our work on the commission, we're required to hold at least 10 public hearings throughout the state of Michigan before we put out an initial draft map. And then after we put out that initial draft map, we're gonna hold an additional five meetings. Now, I can tell you right now, these numbers are the minimum for what the Michigan Constitution says we have to hold, but in all likelihood, we are going to hold significantly more meetings than this as long as, you know, God willing, we can do it in a safe fashion. The purpose of these public hearings are threefold. They're to inform the public about the redistricting process. They're to share the purpose and responsibilities of the commission, and they're to solicit information for the public about potential redistricting plans. As a commission, we do have criteria in the Constitution that we have to abide by as far as the actual map drawing goes. And of particular interest is the fact that Michigan is one of the only states that has communities of interest as a pretty high metric as far as factors to consider. So we're gonna need to use these public hearings to help gauge where the communities of interest are, who they are, where they reside, and where they think their communities are located. And this is kind of where you guys come in. If y'all could please inform your city and your community about the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, I would very much appreciate it. We have our meetings every Thursday. Our regularly scheduled meetings are Thursdays. However, we usually hold a second meeting some other time during the week, and I suspect we will hold even more meetings as our work continues. These meetings are all live over Zoom and open to the public. They can write in for public comment or speak to us directly. And this is another way for the public to interact with us even before we do those statewide public hearings. You can contact us at redistricting@michigan.gov or mail items to that address that you see listed there. And if you would like more information, you can visit us at www.michigan.gov/micrc. And yeah, that's about it. If y'all have any questions, I'd love to hear from anyone.
I have a question.
Sure.
Anthony, thank you for the presentation. I sense that the dates and the location for the public hearings have not been set yet.
They have not been set. We are currently trying to come up with a plan that represents both where the people are in the state of Michigan, but also gives different rural communities an opportunity to come and see us and speak to the commission. So they've not been chosen yet, but we're in the midst of planning. It will probably be finalized in the next meeting or two.
Okay. I have a quick question. Do you have a target date for when the process would be complete?
So the Michigan Constitution says we have to have our first draft of maps completed by September 1st. However, we're running into a little issue with that date because the US Census has been delayed until September 30th. So obviously, we can't create, you know, accurate data and evidence-based driven maps with inaccurate data. So we're trying to figure that out. However, I expect them to be, I expect the first draft to go out shortly after we receive that census data. After we put out the first draft, the public has 45 days to give us their input on the maps that we come up with. And under the normal date of September 1st would put us at about November 15th. So I expect, you know, with the census delay, probably early to late December. And these will be in place for the 2022 midterms. So that's when these maps come into effect. So that's when you can expect the results of the maps to, you know, have their first selection.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, too. It sounds like your meetings right now are not public meetings, is that correct?
All of our meetings are public right now. Actually, it's the law in the Constitution. We have actually, we can't even talk about map drawing work unless it is in a public meeting. It just so happens that, you know, we're on Zoom because of this pandemic. But they're all livestreamed, both on YouTube and on Facebook. All of the meetings can be viewed at the michigan.gov website. And yeah, we're trying to be as transparent as possible with this whole process.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just had one quick question. What was the deadline for public to make comments?
Well, the public can make comments at any time. They can write us now. They can, they can speak at our meetings, much like how you guys have public comment at the beginning of your meetings. We do as well. But after that first draft of maps come out, which, like I said, will be, you know, hopefully sometime late September or early October, they'll have 45 days after that to comment on the maps. But we really need the public involved, you know, from today. We need the public to tell us where they're located, where they think their communities of interest are. Even if, you know, somebody wants to submit a map to us, they can submit a draft map to us, and we can then put it into our software to see what effect that would have on, you know, the maps as a whole. So even if someone wants to draw a map on the back of a napkin with a little mitten drawing and draw in their neighborhood, they can totally do that, and we'll make it work for them.
Okay, anyone, council, anyone else? I think that's it. Anthony, thanks very much for joining us. That's informative. It's helpful to us. It's a topic that's new, obviously, to all of us around the state. And there's a lot of interest in it. So I appreciate you taking the time to get that out to us. And I'm sure you'll be continuing to communicate things out to the cities that will help us then communicate to our residents through our normal communication channels.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on. We need to have you stop sharing your screen. Anthony, can you stop your screen share, please?
Looks like he did.
There we go.
I believe it is.
He did stop. Okay, we're good now. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is State Representative Joe Tate. Representative Tate actually was in our last meeting, but I didn't know until the very end when he made a comment during public comment. We invited him to come back and be on the regular agenda, so he'd have a chance to address us and everyone who's attending our meeting when everybody's a little bit more fresh at the beginning of a meeting. So Representative Tate, it's great to have you with us tonight, and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. And I'll be very brief with my remarks and presentation now. I'll share my screen at this time.
Leah, you may need to enable this screen share.
I, it's been enabled.
Okay, there we go. I got it.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Leah. So like the mayor said, my name is Joe Tate. So I'm a state representative in the 2nd House District that cover the Lower East Side of Detroit, Gross Point Park, Gross Point Farms. And just wanted to give you a very wave tops update about what is happening in Lansing. We started our legislative session in January, and it's kind of been moving forward from that. And I sit on, I'm the ranking member on the House Appropriations Committee. So budget has kind of been top of mind for us since we started. In February, the governor laid out her executive recommendation. And as you all know, our budget, our fiscal year goes from October to October, or October to the end of September. And this year, last month, the governor laid out her executive recommendation, which starts the budget process for us. And she recommended about a $67 billion budget, which is about 5 billion from last year. We're around $62 billion. With the general fund dollars, meaning that's the money that we can, that isn't tied to anything, about $11 billion and about 15, almost 15 billion in school aid. And some of those line items, again, I'll just cover at a very high level. Significant pieces that you see on the slide, they have everything from increase in foundation allowance, significant investment in childcare, Great Start Readiness Program, which is our state pre-K program. 40 million for high water infrastructure grants is obviously top of mind to communities along the river and Lake St. Clair. Constitutional revenue sharing increase of about $15 million and statutory revenue sharing increase of about almost $10 million. I should say with this recommendation, this is the start of the process. We have until September to finish the budget. Ideally, we want to get that done sooner. And in the past, it's been done, you know, as soon as June. So know that this recommendation is just the start of things. The legislature has a budget now, so it will change. But this is really the start of our process as we get going. I just want to touch on some recent supplemental budgets that were passed out of the Senate and the House and will be making their way towards the governor's desk. One is House Bill 4047. As you may recall, in December, the federal government appropriated, I believe, $900 billion for COVID relief. And the majority of this is that federal aid that has to be appropriated at the state level and pushed down. So line items here around, here are vaccine distribution, $110 million COVID testing, emergency rental assistance, and also direct care wage, direct care wage increase extension. Not all of, in this budget, not all of the federal aid has been spent down. So we'll anticipate another supplemental budget that will probably be coming soon again for us to appropriate those dollars. Because we had, out of that 900 billion that we received from the federal government, we, our share, Michigan's share, was close to $6 billion. It's a little less than that. About a little 5 and 1/2, between 5 and 1/2 and 6 billion dollars. And then we look at House Bill 4048. So this is a school aid budget, so almost 2 billion in federal aid. And we look at the significant line items. So this S.E.R. formula, so elementary and secondary school recovery grants for schools, about 90 million in summer programs, and then about 45 in high school credit recovery programs, obviously due to COVID. I know I went through that fairly quickly, but I know I want to be brief. But if anyone has any, any questions for me, and also, I'm happy to dig into the weeds, Mr. Mayor and council members, if you would like to, as we go along with the, as we move along here with the state budget.
Okay, terrific. Council, do you have any questions for Representative Tate? It's good to see a sense of where this is headed so far. And it's nice to be, to get a briefing so early in the process, so we get a sense of where the state government's gonna go between now and finalization of the budget. So I appreciate that.
Oh, my pleasure.
Again, any other council comment or question for Representative Tate? Well, I guess, I guess we're overwhelmed with the, with the numbers. But, but the process is early. I appreciate you coming to talk to us. Something I'd like to thank you for particularly, you've always shown an interest in attending council meetings in your constituent municipalities. I think that's important to create those relationships. And since you've been in office, you've always done, I think, a stellar job of doing that. And I wanted to express my appreciation for, for that, that approach that you've taken.
Thank you, and thank you for being accessible, council members and Mr. Mayor as well, too. And if anything comes up, please feel free to reach out.
Absolutely. I've got you on speed dial. Okay. Thanks, Representative Tate. You, you can stay for as long as you like, but you're not on the hot seat anymore.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Councilors, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There was a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Haja.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Next item is approval of the regular agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I'll support that.
Leah, did you get that? I think we did.
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Call the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Fluid.
Yeah, just a quick question. Are we going to be discussing the Dingus family incident? I felt that should be on the agenda, and at a minimum, we should just be getting an update on everything that transpired. I think a lot of people are probably aware of where things stand, based on Facebook, based on news coverage, but I don't think we should gloss over it on the agenda. And I felt that we should at least get a brief update about it. Can we add that to the agenda?
Council, what's your pleasure? City manager, I don't recall if you're gonna, if you have much of that in your update. We haven't had a chance to really ask the administration to prepare to do a proper update that's comprehensive. I believe that there's some risk that it'll be viewed as incomplete. But I'm happy to, if the city manager is willing to include some comments on that in his manager's report, that might be fine.
I've actually got some slight updates, Mayor Danner, when it comes to the Public Safety Director update, if I may speak on then. Otherwise, yeah, I don't have any other real updates besides what happened, you know, with Wayne County and a couple others that I could provide for council and the public.
Okay. Well, let's, let's then focus, I would prefer that we focus on the Public Safety Director update topic and then other things that may come out of the manager's report and council comments.
So we're getting an update, or we're not getting an update? Or we're getting a personal?
We're not prepared to do an update. If you, it would have been helpful if you wanted an informed update, if you had asked the administration in advance for the update, as you did on one of the, at least one of the other agenda items. So they had a chance to properly prepare the item. It's not unfair to the administration, really, to put an item on that's largely their responsibility to respond to without the opportunity to prepare.
That's true, and I agree. But I'm quite surprised that there's nothing on the agenda regarding that. And I feel like we ought to be able to at least get a few sentences about it without somebody needing to go back and do research about that.
Well, it's, I think that if those, anybody that has comment on that on council, we can do that at the appropriate time. But I would like to move on with the approval of our regular agenda. As it stands, Councilman Fluid, you did have an opportunity to make the request in advance so that we could have added it to the agenda and done the preparation. So I think that let's do it on an ad hoc basis through various other topics that are already on the agenda. Let's move on, and Councilman McConnell.
So I just want to clarify, because it sounded like the city manager was saying that he was gonna do some update during his report on the Public Safety Director. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, some, some elements of that update, we'll touch on this for sure.
All right.
With that, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Haja.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we come to public comment agenda items. I'm gonna turn that over to the administration to inform us of written comment and also to manage an oral comment session. City Manager Sizeland.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So I do have several written comments for the agenda items and non-agenda items. I just wanted the public to know, we did receive a significant amount, but we do have some rules, too, in place of when those comments could come in. So anything that was submitted after 5 o'clock on Sunday will not be read. But with that said, I do have several that I'm ready to discuss. This public comment comes from Mr. Greg Donnelly. "I have concerns regarding Agenda Items 9 and 12, too. I have heard from people all over the country who are appalled about the recent acts of racist intimidation that our neighbor Jedana Dingus and her family have been forced to endure. I'm sure that you've heard from people near and far as well. What our community most needs to address is not these singular racist acts, but rather how and why the resident who committed them felt that this was okay to do so. His actions are enabled by a system that continually upholds racism as the status quo. How are we going to change that in our community? We need to ensure that our city leaders, like the Public Safety Director, the city manager is about to hire, have the approach and cultural competency necessary to respond appropriately to such incidents when they occur. His recent actions show that Lieutenant James Bostock does not. Please remove him from consideration for the role. You're probably also hearing that the opinions of those who don't live in Gross Point Park should mean less in this moment, a typical refrain that comes from generations of being exclusive and insular. This is a short-sighted point of view, and I would only ask you to ask yourselves if all of the people making important decisions for our community today, like the city manager, the Public Safety Director, and others, live in Gross Point Park themselves." This comment comes from Mr. Tim Kohler. "It is exciting to see that the URF is claiming they have raised $30 million from 35 contributions from around the county. Wonderful news, and look forward to those pledges being turned into verifiable cash on hand. Also want to acknowledge and thank the URF for providing a sustainability summary. Hopeful that a parking and traffic study remains on the agenda. That said, wanted to continue my suggestion to council and the URF to consider the need for the DDA to contribute $75,000 annually to the URF. While I understand that the annual commitment will no longer be needed when the endowment reaches $15 million, the URF has noted that any surplus will be added to their endowment. Projections from the URF show a surplus of at least $100,000 in most years. Stated another way, the $75,000 annual contribution from the DDA, the URF, will be going to fund endowment of a private organization. Since the DDA district encompasses several entities besides the private arts center controlled by a private organization, I continue my strong suggestion that the council and URF discuss the need for the $75,000 annual commitment. I believe it would be a gesture of goodwill for the URF to announce they no longer have a need for the funds due to the generosity of donors from the area, and that the annual $75,000 should go to support activities of the DDA and other entities in the DDA." This comment comes from Sabine of Westchester Road. "As everyone in our community, I was shocked and angered by the display of the KKK flag in the trauma caused Jedana Dingus and many other residents. I disagree fully, however, with the recent movement demanding that interim chief Bostock's name be removed from consideration as the permanent chief. As unfortunate as it is, I know the police was not able to do anything to stop or rectify the appalling display of the offensive flag. I feel that our Public Safety Department is outstanding, performing their work with great professionalism and care. I personally had several interactions with various PSLs and detectives in the past month and was amazed with the manner they responded to my crisis. Furthermore, I do not understand the current trend to overly criticize some pillars of our community, like our Public Safety Department, our amazing and generous donors, and many other community advocates. In my view, progress should be defined by building on what makes our community special, as well as improving education and awareness on injustices of all sorts and inclusiveness." This comment comes from Ann Burschbeck. "I'm writing response to the verbiage via emails and social media that has been circulating in our community about the hiring of the new DPS, Public Safety Director. I'm astounded by the implication contained in these messages. To imply that our administration is not looking to hire the very best candidate for the position is absurd. No one except maybe every resident of our city cares more about the quality that we have had for many years." No one except maybe every resident of our city cares more about the quality that we have had for many years. I'm concerned about the small group of council members who, who running with an agenda that does not represent our city and citizens, residents. They seem to espouse change for change's sake." This comment comes from Mike Fickiny. "Again, another attempt by the new city council members, along with a small but loud group of outside agitators and their minions to use the race card and other low tactics as a way to demean our wonderful community and our hard work, the administration, in order to accomplish their own agenda. Unless anyone can convince Police Chief James Craig to leave his post in the city of Detroit and come to GPP, I strongly suggest that we should keep our interim police chief as the permanent chief of police in Gross Point Park." Uh, this comment comes from Fred Nazarko. "Uh, I would like to extend my support to the GPP Public Safety and their interim Public Safety Director, James Bostock. As resident and property owner of the city for over fifty years, I and my family and friends have always felt safe and secure in our city. There have been several instances when we have needed Public Safety respond in life or death moments, and thankfully, our officers and managers respond quickly, and with no judgment of who they are helping. There are many reasons why residents choose to live in our community, and public safety is certainly one of them. I'm proud and grateful, as I'm sure you are as well, of our Public Safety Department interim chief Bostock. I have a hundred percent complete trust in our city manager Nick Sizeland to hire the most qualified incoming police chief that will serve our city and residents as it has over the decades." Uh, this comment comes from John Francis of Windmill Point. "Over the past thirty-two years, I've been a resident of three of the five Gross Points, fourteen of them here in the park. I've never spoken at or written a letter to council before now. I'm writing tonight to express my full support of our incredible Public Safety Department, and per the existing city charter, allow Nick Sizeland to perform his duty and hire a new director. I'm also writing to express my opposition to the recent micromanagement of our city government by a small faction of council members and citizen activists, many who I believe do not reside in the park. I choose to live in the park because of the existing amenities, many of which have been made possible by an accepting donor policy over the past fifty years, which should not be changed by a small faction of so-called activists. I'm looking forward to the Fine Arts Performance Center becoming a reality, as well as the improvements to the Marina at the Windmill Point Park. In conclusion, I know the silent majority of the residents of the park have similar feelings as my own. They enjoy the parks being open to residents only, as well as the existing type and quantity of diverse housing options that currently exist. Please do not let anyone destroy what we feel is one of the most beautiful and safest places to live in Michigan." Uh, this comment comes from, uh, Michael Shields. "I would like to commend Lieutenant Bostock and our GPP police officers for their handling of the safety measures around Gross Point Park. They did everything they could within their legal guidelines handling a clearly inappropriate incident which all residents oppose. We have seen this consistency throughout the department in all matters. I would plead for our city council to publicly support Lieutenant Bostock and his officers, as is done in well-run communities. They are our saviors. Any claim that they have not done their job properly seems to be unfounded, rooted in political motivations and influenced by those outside our community. On another note, the recently adopted new donor policy seems also politically motivated and throws up additional roadblocks to those who do want to do great things for our community. It should be overturned immediately. Claims of this is good governance are disingenuous, at best, and hide the true motivation. The donor policy actually inspired our family to make a major gift to the SCOP Center Menugian Gallery to ensure its success. Those funds could have easily been directed to a much needed municipal project like the Marina. Thank you." Uh, this comment comes from Dick Schroeder of Lake Point. "I am concerned, after observing the last meeting of the Diversity Committee, that the interim Director of Public Safety will not get a fair chance at the director position. It became apparent to me that this committee is agenda-driven to only allow a person of color, female or LGBT, be hired as the director. There is no discussion of qualifications, just make sure that the new applicant checks off the boxes they care about. When this agenda-driven process set the city up for a lawsuit, if we don't allow a fair, blind process to pick the best candidate without looking at the color of that person's skin or sexual identity, I don't understand why we're gonna have a process if this diversity committee can dictate who we hire. I was appalled when a participant in this meeting accused the Cotton Foundation of racism because they rehabbed dilapidated properties in the park and subsidized rents to entice younger people that might hopefully someday make the park a permanent home for a growing family of children, and no councilperson objected to his comments. If this is what comes out of this committee, I would like to see the committee disbanded." Uh, this comment comes from Sue Van Elslander of Three Mile. "I'm a seventeen-year resident of GPP. I've raised four children, enjoyed the parks, the theater, the gym, the Marina, shopping and dining. It's a wonderful place to raise a family, particularly because the makeup of the residents, the fabric of our community is so diverse. It's what makes the parks so unique. What is concerning me is the false narrative coming from a small group of residents claiming racism and exclusion in our community. Make no mistake, the gross act of discrimination fellow residents Jedana Dingus was exposed to is not to be tolerated, but is also was the act of one individual, and no way reflects the attitude, views, and morals of the wide majority of our residents. To prevent the interim Public Safety Chief from consideration of being hired in a permanent role because of this incident is nothing short of a power grab by that same small group. They are more interested in creating division where none exists, rather than finding solutions to problems common to the most residents. We're not perfect, but there is no need for meddling in the hiring process of the chief. It's the city manager's responsibility. Have faith in the man and let him do it. I do want to say thank you to our many gracious philanthrop- philanthropic donors who have afforded us so many amenities and all we all enjoy together. What would we do without you? Thank you, and God bless." This comment comes from Mr. Max Veener. "Uh, we have all heard about the disgusting flag incident. It was despicable behavior and becoming of our community. Unfortunately, there seems to be an effort to leverage this incident against Gross Point Park Public Safety, and in particular, trying to attack interim Public Safety Director Bostock. I have lived here going on seven years, and have had nothing but positive feelings towards our public safety. Furthermore, in the short term, I have done my best to objectively inform myself on Gross Point Park Public Safety in general, and Director Bostock in particular. My view on both is nothing but positive. I find him extremely professional. I'm all for valid and constructive criticism, but the suggestion by some that interim Director Bostock be removed for consideration as permanent director is unfair and irresponsible. I have tried to make this point repeatedly. Such attacks and conflation have broader consequences. Not only are they unreasonable, but they are creating both a divisive environment that will be off-putting for current and future employees of the city, but is also divisive for the broader community." Uh, this comment comes from Mr. Joe Hebecca on Kirchvall. "I've served on the Board of Directors at the Gross Point Chamber of Commerce for over eight years. For years, the business district in Gross Point Park was neglected. With the continued efforts from donors and city officials, the business district is thriving and now rivals most other communities. I'm disappointed and confused as to why we're creating more obstacles for those who take their hard-earned money and selflessly donate it to our community for the betterment of us all. These projects, which not only create exposure and jobs for our community, boost the public image of our city and city officials. Director James Bostock and the Public Safety Department are an outstanding group of individuals whom I've had the pleasure of getting to over the years. The crime report in the agenda for Monday's meeting shows things to appear to be in order, so where's the issue with the department and/or James Bostock being director? Who better knows the needs of a community other than the people who've been serving it for years? Is it wrong to promote a qualified individual with respect for the community he serves and years of experience working alongside fellow public safety officers, businesses, and residents? Why are we looking elsewhere and wasting resources and tax dollars looking to replace what we already have? This seems foolish. Be assured, things are moving in a very unpopular direction with business owners and residents. I urge you to reconsider your approach." Mayor Denner, that's the end of, uh, written public comment.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute. Thank you, Councilmember Rayland. Uh, I think that we need to complete the public comments, the session. Uh, Councilmember Fluit, I think you'll have a chance to comment during the council comment, uh, item on the agenda. I'd like to stick with our, with our process.
I'm gonna put out a letter that wasn't read.
I didn't hear.
A letter, a letter, a letter that-
I, I wasn't commenting for myself. Um, our state senator sent a letter and asked that it be read into comment as well.
Um, I don't have a letter. Was, was that submitted by Sunday?
That was submitted on February seventeenth.
February seventeenth.
February seventeenth. That would be before the, uh, that may be in the, uh, non-agenda items, because that would be before the agenda came out. This is supposed to be limited to agenda items.
Well, it's regarding, um, the Department of Public Safety, so I wasn't sure if it would be in agenda items or non-agenda items, but it's in keeping with all the letters that were just read.
Okay. Um, I think since we don't have that at hand, um, perhaps the, uh, uh, we can move ahead with verbal comment, um, and, uh, perhaps by the time we get to the end of verbal comment, we'll, we'll have that in hand, uh, or if not, maybe by the time we get to public comment and non-agenda.
I can read it. It's, I have it right in front of me. It was, it, it was sent to all of council.
Was it, uh, requested that it be, uh, read at the meeting? I suppose it was.
Yes, yes.
Was it, uh? Okay, uh, the other, the other bit of compliance is two hundred and fifty words. Does it appear to be within two hundred and fifty words?
I don't know. It's from our state senator.
I understand. Okay, go ahead and read it.
It's, I would guess it's within compliance, but he mailed, uh, it's dated the fifteenth, as far as I can tell.
So this is, this is from Senator Holier, who's our, uh, who's our Senate representative, and, uh-
Yes.
Adam sent something in, so why don't you read it? Thank you.
Uh, it's addressed to the mayor and city council members. "My office has learned, constituents who are residents-" Let me grab my glasses, just in case. "Constituents who are residents of Gross Point Park are concerned about the lack of diversity within the thirty-two-member ranks of sworn officers serving in the Department of Public Safety and the current search for a new Director of Public Safety to lead the department. Specifically, we are told there are no women or people of color serving in the dual roles of police firefighter and emergency medical technician for Gross Point Park. Further, there have never been any people of color hired by the department, and very few women have served as sworn public safety officers since the city was founded in nineteen fifty. No women have served in senior leadership roles as sworn public safety officers. Our understanding is women who do work in the department are largely relegated to duties in code enforcement, dispatch, and secretarial positions. We have received the Gross Points and Harper Woods NAACP branch resolution pointing out current department policies have, quote, "historical discriminatory hiring promotional patterns and practices," unquote, on January eighth, twenty twenty-one. See attached. The issue we understand is one of fairness in hiring frontline first responders and giving everyone an equal opportunity for advancement in sworn public safety officer roles. We understand the city is now searching for a new Director of Public Safety with an application deadline of February twenty-second fast approaching, and an interim chief already selected without ever posting the position publicly for competitive recruitment from a vast field of law enforcement professionals available. This is troubling. Municipalities, as a matter of principle, are public agencies that generally must post job openings in every department. As the son of a career firefighter and member of the former Senate Appropriations Subcommittee on Justice and Public Safety, I certainly understand the challenges with hiring, retaining, and promoting first responders, particularly when it comes to hiring women and people of color. The pool of applicants can be small. However, to never have hired a person of color and only one woman since the city was founded suggests a deeper challenge is at play, and we are interested in further understanding the challenges Gross Point Park faces in this area, as well as ways we may be able to assist in overcoming them. Gross Point Park is not unique. Public safety departments across the state, even the Michigan State Police, are facing similar challenges, but many are finding ways to overcome these challenges and increase the overall performance of their respective agencies in the process. This often involves reviewing policies over time that have the effect of discriminating against traditionally marginalized groups, including women, African-Americans, and people of color. Please have someone contact our office regarding our concerns. We stand ready to assist in any way we can, and ask you to read this letter into record of the next monthly city council meeting, so the public may be aware of this correspondence. Sincerely, Senator Adam Holier."
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, well, let's keep moving along. Um, I think we'll get to, uh, verbal comment now.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So, um, before I begin, if you would like to be added to the queue for public comment, um, please either uh, raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone keypad. So I'm going to go ahead and share the three-minute timer. And then the first person that I have in the queue is Mary. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, and please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Leah. Mary Rulo, Gross Point Park. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to briefly recap some views about the Public Safety Director's search process that I have shared via emails with the manager and the council. "It is important that our community have confidence in the integrity of the process and the selection. For this to happen, I believe the process must be as transparent as possible. To that end, I ask, number one, that the demographics of all applicants be shared in a way that prevents individual identity, but that is clear about the total makeup of the applicant pool. Number two, that the criteria used to determine the finalist pool be shared, including who was involved in the determination. Number three, the questions to be asked of the finalists are shared with the public, or at least with the council. I'd be interested, for example, in how each views the concept of community policing in the context of the park. And number four, that the interviews of the finalists be public. If that is not possible because of current job confidentiality, that the answers be transcribed and be identified as those of candidate A, B, C, et cetera. Thank you."
Thank you. And the next person in the queue is Brian. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, and please go ahead.
Thank you, Leah. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, I'd first like to note that today's International Women's Day. I'd like to acknowledge, uh, the noticeable positive impact that the women members of this elected body have had on its operation uh, for our city and our region. Uh, the two com- items I'd like to comment on the agenda um, are, first, I'd like to voice my support for the change to the composition of the Planning Commission. Uh, this change finally puts our Planning Commission in compliance with state law. It makes our board composition in line with best practices of most of the communities in Metro Detroit. Uh, second, I'd like to talk about the racist acts perpetrated against Jed- excuse me, Jedana Dingus and her family, uh, family that I've had the privilege of being friends with for over twelve years. I've already emailed my statement to you regarding this incident and its handling by the city. Then I'm seeing and hearing fellow citizens of our city try and diminish or dismiss Ms. Dingus's comments, uh, concerns, and actions. The KKK is an organization with nearly a century-long documented active presence in Metro Detroit and even longer history in our country. It has and still uses intimidation, terrorism, vandalism, assault, arson, murder, and lynching, chiefly against African-Americans, but also Jewish, LGBTQIA, and other minority communities, all of which live in our community. Based on this long history of the KKK, I do not see the Dingus's family as having overreacted in any way to the real threats to their safety. I hope it is made abundantly clear to our community, region, and the nation what you, our city officials, will take action on to represent the strong values and actions you will uphold in this matter for our fellow neighbors, and I also hope you will make it abundantly clear to our community, region, and nation what actions you find indefensible, reprehensible, and despicable by our fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm just going to go ahead and repeat myself. If you do have a comment, please make sure that you state your full name and city of residency for the record. The next person in the queue is Anna. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And go ahead.
Thank you, Anna Signorino, Gross Point Park. This is about dogs and rules and special privileges. We have rules in place for a reason: the comfort, the safety, and the well-being of all residents and park users. In the park, the rules are clear: no open fires, no loud music, no liquor, no glass containers, no bikes on the boardwalk. The first rule on the city park's website reads, "Dogs prohibited. No dogs shall be permitted within either park, section seventeen dash thirty-two of the city code. Yet in twenty eighteen, Dan Grano used his position of power as councilman and ordinance review liaison to allow for some dogs some of the time. If we were, if we relaxed this rule, then we alter- If we were if we relaxed this rule, then we ought to relax the other rules. And so therefore, I say, let's have a Burning Man event in Patterson, a huge bonfire, loud music, liquor flowing, and shattering glass bottles. That sounds absurd, but that's because the rules are in place for a reason: the comfort, safety, well-being of residents and park users. And I don't have to tell you how irresponsible dog owners behave in Patterson. You already know that. I've already shared that with you. But I never would have imagined when yesterday a woman allowed her leash'd dog to come up behind my daughter at the ice rink and jumped on her back with its two front paws. My daughter always was terrified. It triggered her PTSD from her horrific dog attack over the summer. And when she quickly skated away in panic, she fell on the ice. Meanwhile, that woman is standing there laughing, saying, oh, how cute that is. No, that's not cute. It was not cute when I rushed my daughter to the emergency room with holes in her face because a dog mauled her face and neck. It's not cute knowing that she's going to need multiple painful plastic surgeries in the future, and it's not cute now as I watch her suffer and try to manage her fear of dogs. 4.7 million dog bites resulting in 800,000 hospitalizations a year. 7% of Americans suffer with synophobia. This is not cute. This is not a perceived threat. This is real. Had my daughter gotten seriously hurt yesterday when she fell on the ice, a broken wrist or concussion, I would have filed a lawsuit against the city, and there are enough attorneys online tonight on this call to know that the city would be liable for her medical bills. We do our best to keep our parks beautiful, sustainable, comfortable, and safe while limiting our risk. We required masks and only allowed 20 people on the ice rink this year due to COVID. We removed metal slides so children don't get burned. We don't even allow roller blades in the parks. We must reinstate the ordinance prohibiting dogs from entering our parks during park hours. City Council, you're voting tonight whether or not to keep Grayno's dog walking passes for some residents some of the time. So folks like Mark Farnin, Bill Denner, and the other 98 households can walk their dogs inside our parks while risking the comfort, safety, and well-being of all park users and assuming the liability risk. And I look forward to hearing which of you will vote to support the interest of the community at large and which of you will vote to support a special privilege for the 1%.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Jeff. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city of residency. Go ahead.
Thank you, Leah. Jeff Greer, Gross Point Park. And I want to start off quickly by expressing my empathy to Anna and her family. It's obvious that they feel a lot of pain because of this incident, and I just want to quickly express my empathy to them and know that I can hear that in her voice. But my comments today are to express my disappointment in the way our public safety and administration officials have handled the racial intimidation issue that occurred against Juddana Dingus and her family. I don't need to tell you, council members, that this is a serious issue, and I shouldn't have to tell you it creates a negative impression of our city. It's reinforcing some of the worst stereotypes about life in the points. But I think this situation gives us an opportunity to address a naivete that's existed within our city government for years. We can't continue to blindly promote and hire from within. The days of an insular gross point park where we hire experts from within city hall without looking outside of our boundaries have to end. I'm asking for more transparency around the search process for the Public Safety Director. Additionally, I'd like us to be considering a wider pool of applicants for the Public Safety Director position. I think that list of applicants should be vetted by members of an ad hoc community panel, and that panel should be collaboratively organized by the administration and council. If a public vetting process is impossible, we need a panel of community members to work with the city manager, interview candidates, and make recommendations on who to hire. I understand that this request for a community panel changes the way we've already defined the process. I understand that, but I really think the events of the past few weeks require it. The eyes of the Metro Detroit area and the national media are on us right now. We have to do better. If we have a more open process that seeks community input, that will help us come to agreement on what the future of public safety in Gross Point Park should be. It'll help us define the best candidate for the job. It may also change us for the better. It might also prepare us for the future. We have an opportunity. Let's not waste it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Max. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
I appreciate it. Max Vener, Gross Point Park. I'm gonna keep it quick, but there's something I need to say. 15 months ago, I attended a council meeting. It really bothered what I was seeing. Some of the members of the council were trying to steer these things into overt political activism. This is 15 months ago. At the time I made a statement, this is a distraction from the core function of the council, and by definition, our council is meant to be apolitical. Furthermore, I was telling you guys then that this is going to be opening a Pandora's box. But one of the council members made it a point to stand and ridicule my statement at the time. Well, here we are right now. Regarding this public safety discussion here and this last suggestion that we should have community control over the hiring, it's a ludicrous proposal. The one thing I want you all to know, I've made it a point for the last 12 months to get to know the public safety, for my kids to get to know them, because these are the people who keep us safe. I try to listen to them, try to talk to them, and I'll point out that all the people who are the most critical right now, they don't make that effort. That's the one thing I heard from public safety. The counselors who are most critical of them haven't actually reached out or talked to them or listened to them at all. I mean, that's something to be aware of. These are the people who know what they're doing, and for us to sweep in and dictate terms to them is not a realistic way of handling things. You know, we need to be aware of this. And again, there's a process that needs to be followed, and I appreciate the concerns of everyone. But be aware that the people who know the job are the ones who should be actually controlling the job. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Andrew. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Thank you. Andrew Turnbull at 855 Bishop. I agree with Max completely, and I completely support public safety. I also support Nick and his role for selecting the the next Public Safety Director. More importantly, I want to remind everyone on council what the city charter states of what their role is. And it says that a council member is a goal setter who helps develop a vision for the community and helps establish goals and milestones. Council members must remember they are elected to make decisions as a collective body, not to act as individuals or apart from the council as a whole. It's completely clear that several council members are pursuing goals and agendas intended to promote issues that benefit outside interests, not the taxpayers or the residents of Gross Point Park. In doing so, it seems the goal the goal is to bring a lot more negativity and divisiveness to our city. You are all elected to serve the residents and the taxpayers, and your focus should be dedicated to improving the city for them, not for other groups that are promoting national agendas and other causes. These members have actively worked to create a negative image for our city and in no way fulfills the duties of their oath of office. So to all the council members, please, stop trying to divide our city. Your goal is to make it better and improve it for the taxpayers and the residents, nobody else. That's what you're that's what you're elected to do and to pursue. Please keep that in mind as you continue to govern us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Anthony. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city of residency. Go ahead. Okay, Anthony, we can't hear you. Can you try speaking again for me? Okay, Anthony, I'm gonna come back to you because you I still can't hear you, but I will come back to you after the next person. So the next person after Anthony is Ms. Maxwell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lena Maxwell. I used to live in Gross Point Park. I live in Southfield now, but I feel like my story needs to be heard too. I just want to mention to you all that in 2012, I had a an incident where my house was robbed, and the Gross Point Park Police did not do their job properly. They illegally searched my son's room, immediately tried to cast the blame on him because they figured that that was the way. They refused to take fingerprints. They I submitted a complaint. I never heard back. This was during his leadership then, of course. My point in saying this to you now is to I don't care about the hiring process as such. I'm not a taxpayer in Gross Point right now, but I certainly have been for 14 years. And I feel like diversity in the Gross Point Park Police EMS Fire Department, which is all included, is extremely important, and maybe some people can't see that because they are not a diverse part of they're not part of a diverse family, or maybe their whole worldview isn't diverse. But I want you to know that a lot of diverse families and even people that don't live in Gross Point Park are having problems coming to this city because of this police department. There is a it is a known fact around Michigan that Gross Point has their own little worldview in a lot of ways. And if you want to combat that, you should start hiring diverse police department personnel. And yeah, I just want to state that because I'm very dissatisfied with what happened to us in 2012. Detective Naduzzi did a terrible job and his assistant, whatever his name was. I just wanted to let that be known, and I support Juddana completely in her efforts to shine a light on this thing that maybe some people don't find is important because they feel safe. Think about how it might feel for other people. I can tell you that the reason why they probably blamed my son was because he didn't fit into their standard. Actually, he was a 4.11 grade point average student that ended up with a full ride in college, but they wanted to try to say, oh, you just want to go to the NBA, don't you? Total profiling, totally unprofessional behavior, and very disappointing. Thank you for listening to me, even though I'm not the gross pointers at the moment. Have a good night, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The next person, Anthony, I'm gonna go back to you and have you try to talk again. Okay, Anthony, I still can't hear you, so I'm gonna have to go on to the next person. Michael, you are next. I'm going. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, hi. Hi there. I submitted a letter. It wasn't read, so I thought I'd read it a little bit. My name's Mike McCush. I've been in the park since 1964. I live over in Audubon. And, you know, there's been good and bad bad with Gross Point. I understand that, but I really enjoy being in the community. If I didn't, I wouldn't be here for over 55 years. But lately, it seems, you know, like I said, I've been here 55 years, and I've never really been. Things just kind of ran as they did, but now it seems like things are getting a little bit off track and want to be aware and plugged in with what's going on since I really do like living here. And I like to, you know, stay here. But, you know, we I know we got to keep up. We got to adapt to change. Pretty similar with other businesses as you do, either adapt to change or dwindle away. But at the same time, it just feels like there's so much distrust and disconnect with the leadership. You know, it starts in Washington, it's been Lansing, and it's drifting its way down to the park level here. And I think all this distrust is just leading to a lot of cynicism with the residents and suspicion with what's what's actually happening. I know we have limitations with our budgets, but I think the city looks to you guys to prioritize what's best for our community in an open and honest, fair way. Fairway and the city council members, you guys have to be open and honest with us and do what's best for the community. Without this, we're gonna waste a lot of energy, as I've heard in this phone call, a lot of people fanning and not really getting anywhere, just just talking, talking, talking. But, you know, we entrust a lot to you guys as city leadership. And I think all return, we just want to open it on a fair process to make sure you get things done for the park. You know, getting things done is really critical. It's kind of frustrating to listen to things going in a circle and not getting anything done. So I'm asking you to please filter out the noise because there's an awful lot of noise between the traditional and social media that we all deal with every day. I know we, you know, we all have tough decisions. We do it every day here. Each one of us with our own budgets at home. So I, you know, lots entrusted into you, lots expected to you. So please be candid with us, be candid with each other. We can handle issues. We're all grownups. So, you know, treat us that way. Don't treat us like we're a bunch of children. And, you know, I've seen the a lot of good things happening with this Gross Point Foundation between the developments at the parks. It's really made the area a lot better, so I'd like to see that continue with these future projects that are on the board. And it seems like that's just enhanced the community that much better to make it a gem for us to live in a great place. So thanks for your time today, and I'll enjoy your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Amy. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, and please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Amy Johnson. I'm a resident of Gross Point Park. I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit committed to research and education around implicit bias. When it comes to selection of the next police chief for the city of Gross Point Park, a comprehensive plan must be in place to mitigate bias, both explicit and implicit. That is all but guaranteed to be part of a selection process, any process, as well as individual behavior. Research has demonstrated that the selection process and the people responsible for making decisions will most likely be biased. To that end, nothing and no one should be considered inevitable. I wanted to say something because I read that the city was considering implicit bias training as a way to address the recent incident involving the Dingus family. It's a valuable start, but it's just that. It's a first step and only a start. It is not a solution. Implicit bias targets individuals, not systems. A system that others today, including State Senator Hallier, have noted has led to one woman and no people of color serving as sworn officers in the city's history. The city strives to become more equitable and inclusive, representing an increasingly diverse community. I encourage the city and its council and members of the administration to take an opportunity to do better, make a stronger, more transparent commitment to the the process itself, and take a hard look at hiring and promotion processes, who is making decisions, who's on committees, and what criteria they're using to evaluate candidates for this search and any search going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Scott. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Sorry, Scott, I muted you. You can unmute yourself again.
Scott Dellis, resident Gross Point Park, lifelong resident of the Gross Points. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We can assume that some residents of Gross Point Park as tenants may find themselves facing eviction due to the economic fallout of the COVID pandemic. Hopefully, no Wayne County Sheriff will accompany our Gross Point Park Public Safety Officers to throw a tenant's property on the curb. We do not want to be on local television for the wrong reasons. I give up the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Bee Spiro. Going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Thank you, Blair Tespiero, resident of Gross Point Park. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I wanted to quickly touch on two topics: donations and the the current search for a new Public Safety Director. I wrote an email, but I see now that it was past the deadline, so I wanted to just share my thoughts on this. The letter that I wrote was in support to Chief Boss or Interim Chief Boss Doc. And I see now that this is it is being put into a recent contract constant by the despicable actions by a current resident. And I just wanted to say it's not an either or. You can still condemn those actions as my family and I do while still supporting our Department of Public Safety. And I'm disappointed to see that the two are being used as pitted against each other. I also wanted to say that my family and I have lived in Gross Point Park since 1995. We've enjoyed our parks and facilities, and especially the ones that have been made possible by resident donations. I was dismayed to hear that the burden of due diligence and the burden of proof or maintenance cost is now being put on the shoulders of those donating. I've worked in the philanthropy on the gift-giving side of I've worked in the philanthropy on the gift giving side of things um for several years and that's an unusual requirement to make of those giving donations. Typically, the organization receiving them has to be incumbent on doing their due diligence and determining their carrying costs and any maintenance cost. I would urge council to revisit the donation requirements and put the burden of proof back onto the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Kevin. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please go ahead.
Thank you, Leah. Kevin Rasmussen, Gross Point Park. Uh, just I had a comment on the senator's statement that was read by councilwoman. That there was only one sworn officer. In my time here, I've seen at least two. It would be, uh, I would be interested in knowing what the actual number was. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is username of iPhone. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Uh, hi, this is Bill Denner, resident of Gross Point Park. Uh, I was, much to my surprise, I just heard my name mentioned in reference to the dog park a few minutes ago. Um, for the record, I do not have a dog pass. I frankly do not know what this resident is talking about. Uh, I understand that she unfortunately suffered a serious dog, dog attack recently. I'm very sorry to hear that, uh, but I do not know what this resident is talking about. Uh, thanks very much.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is username of Dez Squire. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dez Squire. I work with the Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion. We are an organization based in the city of Detroit. Um, I was calling and wanted to provide some comment in support of um several residents, including the Dingus family. Um, and lift up the suggestions that have been shared by the NAACP and yeah, NAACP branch, um, Ms. Johnson, Greer, and several others in regards to the hiring practices for a public safety uh chief. When we look at what the history of our local area has been, including the gross points, and I do talk about our suburban areas and a collective and that we have to look at the history of systemic racism and, and segregation within the region in order to understand what our local policies and practices are. Um, I raise this up in that because I have heard in here echoed um concerns about the hiring practices and the need for changing um side practices in order to be able to promote diversity and inclusion within the public safety departments. There have been police departments like Canton um who have incorporated suggestions like what Greer had made around building in um a community component in that hiring process in order to be able to help promote inclusion of both community input as well as to provide a different perspective. Um, when we do look at the national concerns at, around around police action and engagement within a community, what we do know in that is that there is a legacy and there is an inherent bu- bias um in regards to how we treat and how we perceive residents who are a person of color and uh versus how we treat residents who are white. And what we do know is that this does lay in part to that history of segregation and that where we have built in who we identify as part of our community and who we do not. Um, I would encourage the Gross Point Park Council to look at opening up their hiring prac- process and look at evaluating and changing their practices in order to be able to promote um a more diverse and equitable process. Um, and this would help to open up conversation in regards to the experiences of your residents of color and that including the recent actions that have happened against the Dingus family. Um, I'm more unhappy, our agency is more unhappy to help answer questions and help with this process. Uh, but you have residents like Amy Johnson who are local experts as well. As well as the Dingus family. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is Carol. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I'm hoping you can hear me. Um, I'm, my concern has to do with the dog park at Patterson Park. Um, we don't understand necessity. Lived in Gross Point for just over thirty years, been very happy here. Um, it's a walking community. The whole idea of putting a dog in a car to drive it to a public park seems ludicrous in this day and age. As well as with the fifteen-page report that we read, it seems as though one of the reasons we want to have a dog park is to attract millennials, which means people like us and our family who are no longer millennials are being totally discounted and not considered as useful citizens in our park. Um, the, also the idea of we're gonna indemnify all the dog owners so that anything happens with their dog, the dog owners can't go after the city. Trust me, I walk to Patterson Park almost daily. And if I'm ever bothered by someone else's dog, the city will not be safe from any legal action from me. If you want a dog park, which is fine, we had a dog for fourteen years. I love it. Love animals. It seems to me we have other property. We can make a dog park that is separate from our public parks. So we are asking or hoping that city council will rescind their vote, or at least vote again and look at the big picture as to what it means to be putting a dog park in a public used park. Masks are posted to be used on the ice rink. I go to the ice rink all the time when I'm walking. I see it. There are not masks on everyone there and there is no one to enforce that. So who is going to enforce the rules of the dog park? Those are our concerns. We don't understand necessity and really hope city council will review this. We did send a lengthy letter to city council, but it must have been too late to make this meeting. We also sent to the city attorney. So we do have, we think valid concerns and would really like it if the city would consider them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next person in the queue, um, Anthony, I'm actually gonna have you try again because I know you've had your hand up for a while. I see that you're unmuted. Anthony, I still can't hear you, unfortunately. Um, can you just try turning your volume up for me? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to move on. So the next person in the queue is Jodana. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, please. And um, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jodana Dingus. I am a resident of Gross Point Park. Um, as I'm sure you have heard by now, on February sixteenth of two thousand twenty-one, my family and I were subjected to hatred, bigotry, racism, and ethnic intimidation when our white next-door neighbor put a KKK flag in his dining room window facing our dining room window because we are black. The Gross Point Park Public Safety Department's response has been inadequate, alarming, and dismissive. We do not feel safe in our own home. Even when we found a full gas, uh can of gasoline in our recycling bin, which was very dangerous and scary, the Gross Point Park Public Safety Department did nothing. They did not fingerprint the gas can. They did not attempt to extract DNA from the gas can. They took the gas can away and they disposed of the evidence. They didn't knock on any doors. They didn't do anything. So this is not some type of hit job on uh Lieutenant Bostick, uh Bostock. We do not feel safe because of the way that this situation has been handled. So the many people who are saying this is divisive, this is not divisive, this is a, this was an act, uh, it was a threat. It was an act of ethnic intimidation. It was an act of racism. So we don't feel safe because we were, our concerns were dismissed when we called about the gas can four weeks before the KKK flag went up. And people are, are trying to characterize this as a neighbor dispute. Walk me through when a white person had a dispute with a neighbor and a white, that white neighbor put up a KKK flag. Doesn't happen. This was a, a threat. It was an act of intimidation. Nobody in the police department, it, it, it was lost on everyone in the police department because there's nobody black that works there, not even a, a custodian, not even a secretary. It was lost on everybody, the significance of me finding gasoline and then finding a Klan flag in the window four weeks later. So what I'm asking is that this department needs to be diversified. There needs to be better leadership. You need to do a better job. I was told sometimes police officers get lazy. You can't be lazy and be a police officer. Okay, because you have people's lives in your hands. And so if you're going to be lazy and be in police work, that, that's problematic. If you're gonna be lazy, find something else to do because I need to feel safe in my home. I was told by multiple people, including the mayor, uh, uh councilman Barobson and other police officers that I was not safe because this person is dangerous and he has a gun. And it is the job of public safety is literally in your job description to make the public state. And I do not feel safe because you haven't done your job. That's why Bostick shouldn't be chief.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is Mike. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Mike Neber from, I'm living on Devonshire in Gross Point Park. I, I don't know the rules here, but I'm, I'm very surprised to hear people that are calling in from outside the city uh commenting on Gross Point Park City Council uh meetings. Uh, I thought this was Gross Point Park and not uh other cities calling in or other organizations. And I don't think it's appropriate. And I think only the city of Gross Point Park uh people that live here should be involved with these uh meetings. And there's no room for outside organizations or whatever the outside is, that they should not be speaking and calling in and participating in these meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is Walter. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please state your full name and city of residency. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Walter Coljay. I live on Kensington. And uh, I'm a little unnerved by the idea of not feeling safe in Gross Point Park. Let me give you some crime statistics from some of the areas around us. City of Detroit, the crime rate is eight thirty-four. Now, this isn't one of the more, the higher the crime rate, the better you're doing. It's the lower the crime rate, the better you're doing. Now, we go to Harper Woods. Their crime rate is four twenty-six. Now, still better than Detroit, but then when you go to Gross Point Park, the crime rate here is one thirty. Now, to me, if we're looking for somebody for public safety, it seems like they're doing a good job. So maybe we should uh not decide we have to go outside the city and all that type of thing to find someone to do a good job. We have people doing a good job now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is Tom. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Tom Steen. I'm a resident of Gross Point Park.
Um, Mr. Steen, before you continue, it sounds like you have a little bit of an echo.
We took care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the individual who displayed the KKK flag recently has caused quite an uproar in the city, even getting national news. It is unacceptable and should be rightly condemned. The community and the many outsiders marched to show solidarity to the family. It was a window looked out to the neighbor's window that the flag was inserted. Comes down to an ugly dispute between neighbors. Even though the Wayne County Prosecutor Prosecutor's Office is not pursuing charges, I do not condone the flag. However, many residents and members of the council have short memories. Were not residents in two thousand thirteen when a man living in Gross Point Park murdered his neighbor on Wayburn. According to news reports, he moved in the attic of an apartment that his relatives were already renting. Was there a march of solidarity to this atrocious act? No. Were reasonable steps taken by the city council to try to prevent this from happening again? Yes. Were all renters or the relatives of the perpetrator blamed? No. This again was an act of an individual. I'm not saying that the flag incident was acceptable in any way, but it, no way does it compare to this previous incident. Gross Point Park is a fabulous city and its residents should be proud. These two acts do not reflect the community as a whole. It's time to get back to the day-to-day running of our business and quit focusing on political issues or personal causes. As far as the hiring of a new director of the DPS, hire the best qualified applicant and do not try to check identity profile boxes. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is, um, Anthony, I'm gonna let you try one more time.
Does, can you hear me now?
Yes, um, please go ahead.
Excellent. I want to say, Tom Steen, that was a great speech and I agree with you. As a matter of fact, I lived on the thirteen-hundred block of Wayburn when that girl who worked at Platts Animal Hospital was murdered by that person. You know, in two thousand two, I moved to Gross Point Park from New York City and I rented a flat in the fourteen-hundred block of Wayburn. In two thousand three, I purchased a home a block away on the thirteen-hundred block of Wayburn. During that period of time, that area of the park was not like it is today. There was a fair amount of crime, like the uh, the murder that Mr. Steen just talked about. Thankfully, the Gross Point Park Public Safety Department was always responsive whenever an incident occurred. And they were on that case when that poor girl was strangled. In two thousand five, I purchased a home on Somerset. In two thousand ten, I purchased my current home on Whittier. Because of the continued strength and the dedication of public safety, that development on Churchillville has been a huge success. It was not like that when I lived on Wayburn. It was a ghost town. Reliable public safety, private waterfront parks containing spectacular amenities like movie theaters from generous donors and strong property values are why I've chosen to stay in the park for the past nineteen years. All of the foregoing justifies the high taxes we all pay each year. You, new radical city council members who are attacking public safety, want to open the parks to the general public and we know that that's what you want to do and want to interfere with the philanthropic donations that only benefit our community, you're completely ignoring the interests of park residents. It's like you don't even care about the park residents. You individuals were elected to serve the residents and property owners of this town, but you're Trojan horses. You're using your positions to attack and destroy our community by furthering your ridiculous national political agendas, uh, political agendas to which you apparently subscribe. If your trajectory is not stopped, I swear there's gonna be a house for sale on Whittier very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is Daryl. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And um, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Daryl Dingus. I live on Wayburn in Gross Point Park. Uh, this argument that outside forces are, have some undue influence on this decision, I find disingenuous. Um, as I understand it, the city manager and uh Mr. Bostock don't live in Gross Point Park either. So do they, why do they get a say? And as far as us not feeling safe, the police officers, the way that they approached our neighbor and they told us, they told my Jodana that, that they didn't feel safe coming at night to his house. They didn't feel safe in a marked car coming to his house because he might get upset and go berserk. So you know, we're not the only ones that aren't feeling safe here. The police officers aren't feeling safe when they approach this person. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Phil. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please state your full name and city of residency. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is uh Phil Easter and I live in Gross Point Park. Um, I just wanted to uh reiterate the calls uh made by uh several of the other uh people who've commented. Uh, just uh reiterating that uh and, and highly encouraging the city manager to take these comments into account. Um, to make the process of hiring um the uh new uh, uh, you know, director of the police um and the safety department to try to uh make that uh process as transparent and equitable as possible. Uh, one of the things I think that um I'm hearing in a lot of the comments is that um the Dinguses uh felt like they were not heard, not listened to, um, and not taken felt like they were not heard, not listened to, and not taken seriously. And there was, you know, another commenter who made that, that same comment. And I understand there are many residents in the city who feel safe because, you know, the makeup of the public safety department is largely white. They're also largely white. But I do think it's important that the, this type of information is taken into consideration when making the hiring decision, that we try to find somebody who's going to be representative of all, of the, all of the residents of Rose Point Park. And to have certain residents who don't feel like they're being listened to by public safety, I think that is a poor reflection on, on Officer Bostock. And I do think in terms of when the final decision is made and the process to select a permanent person for this position is done, that I really hope that the city manager and council members will take all of this information into consideration and to listen to all residents and members of this community and not just those who, you know, have not had to involve the police for these kind of threats because that's, that's not something they have to deal with. So that's, that's my comment and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, I have one more person, so their hand raised. Jordana, if you would like to go ahead and comment again, please.
Thank you for letting me comment again. I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, you know, several people have made comments and have indicated that, you know, as I said before, that somehow this was a neighbor dispute, so I need to go back to that. This was not a typical neighbor dispute. There have been, there are neighbor disputes in the community, I'm sure. Property lines, fences, dogs, all different kinds of things. This was not that. And I need people to stop characterizing it as that because that's what they want to care, that's how they want to characterize it. This person grew up in this community and this person is a white supremacist. So the community, you can deny it all you want, you need to own it. Okay, that's what I've told the city manager when I met with him. That's what I told Lieutenant Bostock when I met with him, that there is a problem in this community around race. And you can deny it all you want, but there's a problem. Every year, like clockwork, there's an issue of some type of racial issue. Last year was a noose found at the high school and it was racial slurs being spewed on TikTok by teenagers. 14-year-old kids spewing hatred and racist, racism is not normal and it's not acceptable. And we need to stop sweeping stuff under the rug. The rug has a big old lump, folks, because you keep sweeping stuff under the rug. Stop sweeping stuff under the rug and address it. These people who are saying that the city council is, you know, that there's outside agitators, which is coded language, that's, that's some racist garbage. Outside educators, this story has hit the Washington Post. This is a national story. And so outside agitators, that's a bunch of nonsense. There are people who are concerned all over the, I have received emails, I have received text messages, I receive calls, I receive messages on Facebook from all over the country. People are outraged that this happened. And so, yes, this is a black eye for Rose Point Park, so let's have a real conversation about it instead of acting like nothing, like it's no big deal. And that this is somehow sometimes conspiracy theory, some type of conspiracy by the city council. The city council needs to address the issues that are brought before them. And this is an issue that has been brought before them. This is something that actually happened. This is not something that I made up. And as Daryl indicated, the police told me they don't feel safe. I'm not safe, they don't feel safe going to my neighbor's home. If you think that racism doesn't exist here, check out the Instagram page, Black in Rose Point Park, Rose Point Public Schools, Black in GPPSS. Check out that Instagram page if you think that racism doesn't exist here, that you're living in some utopia that's perfect and that this is all made up by agitators. I'm not an agitator. I live here just like you do. And if people who don't live here don't have a voice, then Nick shouldn't have a voice and neither should Bostock. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Charlene. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Charlene McNairy and I'm a resident of Rose Point Woods. As a frequent supporter of Rose Point Park businesses, when I received my recent copy of the Rose Point News, I was saddened to see this comment. He probably had just had enough and he made this poor decision by putting this flag up. In the early 2000s, I worked at the Chrysler Planet Jefferson Encounter in the finance department. At least three times per week, we ordered lunch from local Rose Point Park restaurants, taking turns to pick up the orders for our team. One day, a colleague took over an hour to return. Given where they were headed, we all knew what was likely causing their delay. Upon their return, our suspicions were confirmed. They had received a speeding ticket on Mac. Or as my mostly white colleagues and I called it, they were DWB, are driving while black in the park. At the time, my white colleagues initially thought black colleagues were lying until they realized more often than not, we received traffic violations on lunch runs while they did not. It became so troubling that my white colleagues began to volunteer to do the runs to save us from tickets. May I remind you, this was in the early 2000s. We are now almost 15 years from that point in time and on February 25th, 2021, the displaying of the KK flag that was described as a poor decision by someone that had probably just had enough? Really? They just had enough? Just having enough 15 years ago resulted in my white colleagues handling all the lunch runs. Just having enough today resulted in hundreds of community members standing up to support the Dingus family. I ask you, when will just having enough result in hearing the voices of all members of the community to create a stronger and more vibrant community for all? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Richard. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself.
Hello, Ms. Leah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead.
Hi, Dick Schroder, 700 block of Lake Point. First of all, I'd like to comment on the situation that happened on Wayburn. I feel so terrible for the Dingus family for what this man did. I don't think there's anybody in Girls Point Park that can stand up for this guy and say, oh, he did the right thing. It was disgusting and I can't even imagine where I would even buy a flag like that anywhere in the United States anymore. With that said, I don't think that the Girls Point Park Police did anything untoward as far as trying to settle this situation. I know Councilman Robson spent over 30 years in public safety and I would wonder what he would feel about how easy it is to get a very good fingerprint off an old gas can that's been out in the, in the elements for any amount of time. With that said, as far as the noose that was found at Girls Point Schools, that noose was three inches long and it was made out of a blind cord, the same way that my blinds came from House of Blinds when it was delivered to me. That's how the cord was wrapped up. Now, as far as driving while black in Girls Point Park, I don't know if that happened, ever happened, or does happen. But I do know while I lived in Detroit and I was right out of nursing school, I gave a young lady a ride home from Henry Ford Hospital who lived in the Jefferson Chalmers area. And she was a young black lady who was having car trouble. So I got as far as Lakewood and Jefferson, when I was pulled over by these two black cops and I was given a ticket for not coming to a complete stop on Jefferson and Lakewood. Once I was given the ticket, the other officer said to the black lady who I gave a ride to, he said, he got that ticket because I hate seeing black ladies with white guys. So I hate racism. I've always hated racism. I know how it feels to be profiled. And I want to let you know that whatever happens in this situation, there's no reason to take it out on interim Chief Bostock. How long's he been interim chief? Is he, is he been the guy that's been hiring nothing but whites and non-females? I doubt it. And it's very difficult to find police officers of minorities or females that can pass the tests that are required to become public safety officers in any community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leah, is that it?
Sorry, Mayor Donner, I was muted myself. Sorry. The next person in the queue is screen name Falcon. I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself and please go ahead.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I'm kind of new at this. It was my son's computer, that's his nickname. So anyway, my name's Al Shaheen, I'm a park resident. And I sent a letter yesterday to, I believe you, Leah, maybe I sent it to the wrong person. So I just want to read the letter first. Actually, I wanted to say a few things first and, you know, it is right, you know, I know Tom has seen this reference it, so has Dick Schroder. These, these incidences are just ridiculous in any community. I don't care if it's ours, I don't care if it's Birmingham, Detroit, Muskegon, these are just, these isolated incidents are just ridiculous. And I guess you can look at them sometimes and say they're not isolated, but in any event, I feel sorry for those people. So with that being said, I just want to read my letter. And it goes like this. As a park resident for 30-plus years, somebody who has spent his childhood in Girls Point Park and somebody who has moved back to Girls Point Park to raise his family, I have had the joy of experiencing the many wonderful attributes specific to Girls Point community, especially Girls Point Park. I work almost exclusively in the Girls Point community and what we have is unique and special. Although I believe in change to keep our community evolving, I find it insulting and disrespectful to many wonderful community members by even thinking we should open our community amenities to outside residents. Furthermore, inhibiting people from giving back to their community is a total slap in the face to them and what they have accomplished in their lifetime. Those two core principles, what make any community special and unique in of itself. That core principle is what made Girls Point Park voted one of the best places to live in the country. Our job as business leaders, community leaders, and council members is to manage our ever-changing world within our community. Our job is not meant to reinvent the wheel. As we do our job, we must always respect our community and the opportunities that were given to us. So council members, please do your job and do not disrespect our community because right now you are not doing your job and you are certainly not respecting our community. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mayor Donner, I still have people in the queue, just so you know.
After that last comment, I want to thank the resident for the, for the comment, but I'd like to remind the residents that this session is for public comment on agenda items. And if there's comments we made that do not relate to our agenda this evening, that should be held to the public comment on non-agenda items later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Donner. The next person in the queue is India. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself.
Hi.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to say that Gross Point and Gross Point Park especially has a race problem in this community. That is unacceptable. I am a young person who is biracial and my family should not have had to deal with having a KKK flag facing our home. Also, I wanted to say that, um, that, I'm sorry. I wanted to say that I was at Gross Point South and I also went to Pierce and I experienced over the years of being in Gross Point Schools, 13 instances where race was an issue, where hatred and racial issues were brought to me and I experienced that. That should not happen and you should be ashamed of yourselves. That is embarrassing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Donner, I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Leah. That closes the public comment on agenda items. The next item of business are public safety officer awards. I want to point out that because of the pandemic, normally we, we recognize the officers that are awarded because of their exceptional service on the job. We were not, we didn't do that last year, I don't believe, because the officers would have gotten their awards and we didn't recognize them here at council because of the circumstances of the pandemic and as everybody got used to doing meetings on Zoom. But this evening, we're able to do that. And so I asked city manager Seisland to introduce it, if you like, or turn it right over to Lieutenant Bostock.
Thank you, Mayor Donner. So I'll turn it right over to interim chief Bostock to present the 2020 Public Safety Officer Awards. Chief?
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Seisland, members of council. I'm very excited to be able to share with you and present the annual awards for 2019 and 2020. And as the mayor said, you know, our 2019 awards were delayed due to COVID. We held out hope as long as we could that we were going to be able to do them in person, but that just didn't happen. So each year, an awards board committee is formed. Members of the board include a command officer, a member of the detective bureau, and then a public safety officer. They read, review, and discuss all the recommendations for the awards that are submitted throughout the year. So now I will, I'll begin by each award by naming the officer or officers and dispatchers involved. And then I'm going to follow it with a short summary of their actions that is deserving of recognition. So the first department commendation is for Sergeant Daniel Kohler and Public Safety Officer Scott Gilchrist. March 21st, 2019. These officers were dispatched to the area of Barrington on the report of two suspicious subjects running through backyards with masks on and carrying a tan purse. Sergeant Kohler located the two suspects matching the description walking on Ashland near Abendale. Upon seeing Sergeant Kohler, both subjects fled on foot. One of the subjects dropped a tan purse and a large amount of coins and shotgun shells fell out. Sergeant Kohler put out a broadcast of their direction, followed by PSO Gilchrist, who located one of the suspects. And after a foot pursuit of over 500 yards and it threw a vacant field, apprehended him. PSO Gilchrist also recovered a laptop computer near where the subject was arrested. Sergeant Kohler's investigation then led him to locate a home invasion that had occurred on Pemberton, which the resident was not aware of yet. Additional canvassing located a stolen shotgun from that location. And for that, a department commendation will be entered into their file. Next department citation is for Public Safety Officer Kevin Remus. March 28th, 2019. Officer Remus was assigned to bike patrol due to the increasing number of larceny from autos and stolen vehicles along the city's west end. While patrolling on his bike for hours, PSO Remus observed someone walking in the alley near Mac and Wayburn. PSO Remus approached a subject, identified himself as a police officer, and then the subject fled on foot. As he was running, the subject threw away objects that he had in his hand in an attempt to elude capture. PSO Remus caught the subject at Mac and Alter. The area was searched and over a dozen cars had been broken into. The department closed approximately 20 larceny cases and the suspect went to prison. Officer Remus stayed out in the cold for hours, observed, pursued, and arrested the subject on his own. And for that, a department citation will be entered into his file. Department Life Saving Award. This is presented to Sergeant Michael Miller and Public Safety Officer Chris McCleavage. June 29th, 2019. Officers were dispatched to the 1100 block of Audubon. The nature of the run was unknown due to cell phone issues. On arrival, Sergeant Miller notified dispatch that he had a patient with a five-inch bone deep laceration to the wrist and forearm. Upon arrival, Sergeant Miller notified dispatch that he had a patient with a five-inch bone-deep laceration to the wrist and forearm. Our ambulance, Medic 1A, was out on another call for service, so MedStar ambulance was summoned. Sergeant Miller and Public Safety Officer Jones were attempting to stop the heavy arterial bleeding, at which time Public Safety Officer McCleavage arrived at scene, and he recognized immediately the significant loss of blood. Officer McCleavage retrieved and applied a tourniquet to the patient's arm. This action stopped the bleeding, and the quick action of these officers prevented the possible loss of life and limb to an already compromised patient. And for these actions, a department life-saving award will be entered into their file. Next is a department unit commendation. Recipients are Detective Sergeant Jeremy Pittman, Public Safety Officer Robert Rigero, and Dispatcher Jill Mazzara. July 12th, 2019. Officers were dispatched to St. Clair Montefaco on a possible armed robbery. It was learned that a white male fifty to sixty years old was armed with a semi-automatic handgun, entered the rectory, dressed like a priest, and held the priest at gunpoint while making demands of the Catholic Church. Suspect then left the rectory, and the area was searched with negative results. Dispatcher Mazzara and Officer Rigero took the information given to the officers, and they used the resources they had available. They used the lean system, they used our record system, PictureLink, and Secretary of State to come up with a possible suspect. An address, a possible address of the suspect was identified, and officers made that location. Working with a family member, officers were able to get the suspect to come out. He was placed under arrest without incident, and two semi-automatic weapons were recovered. For that, a department unit commendation will be entered into their file. Next is a department citation for Public Safety Officer Christopher McCleavage. July 15th, 2019. Officer McCleavage was informed that a fifteen-year-old female with special needs had been missing from home for approximately ten hours. Officer McCleavage started an intense search for the missing teen and tracked her cellphone to a home on Gunston in the city of Detroit. He notified the Detroit Police Department of his findings, which led to the recovery of the missing teen. DPD brought the teen to our station where she was picked up and reunited with her mother. Public Safety Officer McCleavage used his law enforcement experience and knowledge to find the missing teen who was in the presence of adults that had harmful intentions. With that, a department citation will be entered into his file. Next is a department commendation for Sergeant Michael Miller, Public Safety Officer Kevin Remus, Public Safety Officer Michael O'Brien. July 23rd, 2019. Officers were dispatched to the area of Mack and Lake Point on a report of a nude male brandishing a gun. Sergeant Miller, along with PSO Remus and O'Brien, arrived and observed the subject in the middle of the parking lot at that location. All three officers tactically approached the subject, at which time they were given several commands to drop the weapon. Several citizens were near the location, and vehicles were traveling on Mack Avenue at the time. Officers were prepared to engage the subject if necessary. However, they showed great patience, tactical awareness in protecting citizens, and eventually getting the suspect to relinquish the weapon on his own. Suspect was taken into custody without incident, and he was transported to St. John Hospital for psychiatric evaluation. For these actions, a department commendation will be entered into their file. Next is a department life-saving award. This goes to Lieutenant Colin Conner, Public Safety Officer Eric Davis, Public Safety Officer Michael O'Brien, and Public Safety Officer Brady Batons. August 3rd, 2019. Officers were dispatched to the church at 1385 Waburn on a report of an adult male having a seizure. Upon arrival, personnel found that CPR was being administered by a passerby on the patient who was unconscious near the altar area. Medic personnel quickly took over administering CPR, and the patient was still absent, any vital signs, and was moved into the ambulance. Lieutenant Conner drove the ambulance so medics could continue to perform CPR. Prior to the arrival of Gross Point Beaumont Hospital, medics reported that the patient had begun breathing and then regained a pulse. Patient was turned over to hospital staff who further stabilized the patient. Hospital recognized that the heroic efforts of the personnel and the citizen undoubtedly saved the life of the patient. And for that, Department Life Saving Award will be entered into the records of this officer. I have yet to make contact with the citizen of that. I do have a citizen life-saving award to present her, but I wasn't able to contact her yet. So that will, that will be still to come. Next is a department unit commendation, and that's for Detective Sergeant Michael Narduzzi, Detective Sergeant Jeremy Pittman, Public Safety Officer Thomas Taylor, Officer Kevin Remus, and Officer Adam Bremer. Officers were dispatched to the 1400 block of Yorkshire on September 12th, 2019, on a report of a burglary alarm. First arriving officers noticed a bicycle next door. Bicycle matched the description of one that was used in three previous home invasions that were caught on Ring cameras. The information was relayed to the remaining officers. First store, excuse me, the first floor was secured, but officers noticed footprints on the electrical box, and the second-floor egress door had a screen torn and was open. Detectives Narduzzi and Pittman, along with Public Safety Officer Remus, climbed to the second floor, searched the home with negative results. Neighboring departments assisted cordoning off the neighborhood, and a search began. Suspect was then located on the porch in the 1400 block of Kensington. He was then arrested for home invasion. He's a suspect in a number of home invasions that were cleared in the Gross Point and Detroit area. For their actions, a department unit commendation will be entered into their file. Unit commendation, Public Safety Officer Michael O'Brien, Public Safety Officer Jesse LaFreniere, and Public Safety Officer Adam Bremer. November 30th, 2019. Officers while actively patrolling observed a subject prowling around several streets. Officer O'Brien called for backup. Bremer and LaFreniere assisted in setting up surveillance on the individual. Officers were aware that the subject matched the description of a subject who had committed an armed robbery a couple of days prior. As a suspect approached the border of Detroit and Gross Point Park, Public Safety Officer O'Brien stopped to speak with the suspect, at which time he fled on foot, running through several yards. Within minutes, three officers converged on the suspect and took him into custody. Suspect was in possession of checkbook, coin, credit cards belonging to residents of Gross Point Park. For this, for these actions, a department unit commendation will be entered into their file. Unit commendation for Sergeant Daniel Kohler, Dispatcher Josie Hendricks, Public Safety Officer Thomas Card, Public Safety Officer Scott Gilchrist, Public Safety Officer Thomas Latta, and Matt Reyes. At noon on April 11th, 2020, officers responded to the area of Cadu and Werner after a vehicle fled a traffic stop and intentionally rammed an oncoming Gross Point City police cruiser in order to flee. Officers located the vehicle on Jefferson and initiated a pursuit. The vehicle continued to flee and continued driving in a reckless manner, including attempting a head-on collision with a border patrol unit that was en route to assist. Throughout the pursuit, which lasted over thirty minutes, officers attempted to deploy stop sticks to deflate the tires without success. The pursuit continued into Detroit, and eventually the suspect drove on the railroad tracks near City Airport. We then lost control and crashed into a tree. A foot pursuit ensued, and the suspect was eventually arrested in the year, in a rear yard approximately two blocks away. Officers demonstrated a coordinated effort and displayed collective calm during a high-stress event, which is a reflection of their cumulative years of experience. Their dedication to duty is commended, and for that, a unit commendation will be entered into their file. Next is a chief's letter. For Public Safety Officer Thomas Card, Dispatcher Joey East, Officers Gilchrist, Lucifer, Ryan Milroth, Ryan Nelson, and Sergeant Daniel Kohler. June 10th, 2020. Severe thunderstorm went through the Gross Points, causing power outages along with downed trees and electrical wires. At approximately 6:30, the first of many 911 calls came into the station. Officers responded simultaneously to the 1100 block of Kensington, 1100 block of Whittier, on reports of smoke in the basement. Both homes had experienced power surges, causing combustible material near the electrical panels to catch fire. With the assistance of Gross Point Public Safety, damage was kept to a minimum, and there was no further fire extension. As officers were en route back to the station, they were called back into service yet again to assist Gross Point Woods, who were actively engaged in fighting multiple fires caused by downed power lines. The prop actions of these officers and dispatchers is an example of excellence and dedication that has become the professional standard for the members of the Gross Point Park Department of Public Safety. And for this, a chief's letter of recognition will be placed into their file. Unit commendation, Public Safety Officer Brady Batons, Thomas Latta, and Ryan Nelson, June 20th, 2020. At 4:30, they responded to the area of Maumee and Cadu. It's time to assist Gross Point Police, who were pursuing a vehicle that had failed to stop from driving recklessly. Gross Point terminated the pursuit, and the vehicle continued into Gross Point Park. Minutes later, a resident on the 700 block of Grand Marais reported that an unknown person had just ran through their backyard and jumped a fence into Patterson Park. Officers were able to locate the suspect in the park, who was sweaty, out of breath, and it appeared to have blood on his shoes. Officers located the suspect vehicle at the foot of Park Lane, where it was abandoned. Officers connected the vehicle to the suspect by the key fob that was in his possession. Further investigations showed that the suspect was wanted for attempted murder, for an incident that happened earlier in the day where two people were critically stabbed in Warren. These officers' quick actions and attention to detail removed a dangerous felon from our city streets. For that, a human commendation will be entered into their file. This department citation, Detective Sergeant Michael Narduzzi, Dispatcher Don Kelly, Public Safety Officer Adam Bremer, Officer Chris McCleavage, Officer Michael O'Brien, and Officer Kevin Remus, October 28th, 2020. At approximately 2:25 AM, they were dispatched to the 900 block of Bedford. After a homeowner called 911, stated that an unknown person had just entered her home armed with a knife. The suspect fled the home in an unknown direction. Officers from the department, along with Gross Point City, quickly established a perimeter and began a yard-to-yard search on a cold, windy, and rainy morning. The search continued for over an hour when the suspect was located hiding in the rear yard of the 900 block of Three Mile, where he was taken into custody. Detective Narduzzi interviewed the suspect, and after building a rapport with him, was able to obtain a confession for the home invasion. Their quick response and tactical search conducted by the officers brought the situation to an end and removed another dangerous felon from our streets. And for that, a department citation will be entered into their file. Last but not least, the department citation. Public Safety Officers Thomas Latta and Officer Ryan Nelson. November 6th, 2020. Officers were dispatched to a rear yard in the 800 block of West Chester on a report of a possible suicide attempt involving a sixteen-year-old perched in a tree with a noose around his neck. Upon arrival, our officers saw that it was apparent that the youth was in crisis mode and was intent on ending his life. Officer Latta and Nelson exhibited calm demeanor, shared their personal experiences, and built a rapport with the youth, which eventually led the youth to coming down from the tree. The actions by these officers de-escalated a potentially harmful situation, reunited the youth with his family in order for him to get professional assistance. And for this, a department citation will be entered into the record. Those are the awards for 2019 and 2020. Thank you.
Interim Chief Bostock, thanks very much. I'd like to congratulate all of the individuals who received awards tonight. It was a long list because we did two years together, and normally, this is a one year at a time. But it's an impressive list of special actions on the part of our department, and I'm proud of each of those officers. Normally, I get to see them in person and shake their hand to congratulate them, but we're not able to do that this year. Hopefully, next year, I'm sure that will occur for the department. But I want to thank you for bringing those awards to us. I know that the officers and their families appreciate the recognition, and I'm glad we're able to recognize them publicly. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rapsin?
Mayor, if I guess as a retired police officer, I would be remiss if I didn't make comments quickly myself. Thank you, Lieutenant Bostock. Really, this is an amazing showcase of the dedicated men and women we have in our department. It's reflective of professionalism, of training, and dedication. And it shows why the Gross Point Park Department of Public Safety is considered one of the finest in the Detroit metro area. So congratulations to everybody. If I could, I'd like to give a shout out. I noticed that some dispatchers got in the order well deserved. An earlier speaker said something about women being relegated to dispatch. He needs to spend some time in a dispatch center. If you're in law enforcement, the dispatch center is the lifeline and nerve center of a police department. And they're just as important as the police officers, so I commend them as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Moreland, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lieutenant Bostock. There was quite a list of awards. I know it's two years long. Coming in as a resident, coming to the council meetings when we did hand out these awards, and they got to take a nice picture with the mayor. It was, it was quite emotional to see that and to see what dedication they have. So I just want to say thank you as well to what the Public Safety Department does. I know you guys are under some scrutiny right now, but you guys do deliver a lot of good services, and it's important to note that as well. The world is changing. A lot more things are coming to light nowadays, and I think we need to address those as well. But you guys continue to do some really good work, and I know the city appreciates that as well. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's keep this moving along. We still have a long agenda ahead, and I'd like to get a few more items in before we take a break. Lieutenant Bostock, thank you, and we'll be back to you a little bit later in the meeting. We'll move on to the managers' report. City Manager Seisland, would you like to deliver your report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Danner and city council members. Excuse me. So we have a communicator update. Currently, we're compiling a condensed four- to five-page communicator for distribution. Highlights in there will be about the Public Works Building, Public Safety Director, Master Plan, Employee Highlight, beautification awards, park announcements, business highlights. I expect about the first or second week of April for distribution, and then afterwards, a regular communicator to resume afterwards. Tiffa COVID grant, the grant was eligible for $5,000 for certain accessories. Businesses that have applied already are still eligible for it. Leah and I are currently working with final applicants for closing out, you know, documentation to give them their funding. And so, you know, once we're done with that, we'll want to convene a Tiffa meeting for round three of COVID support. The DDA did approve a total fund of $20,000. They actually approved a line item move of that to expand its eligibility for businesses to include showing financial distress as an easier way for businesses to apply for this grant. Incidentally, that's in legal review by Bodman. DTE is done working in the city, but they should be coming back fairly soon now. That weather's getting a little warmer so that they can address those restoration concerns, you know, that the snow is melting and areas there. And they'll probably be finishing up over on Kirchball in the Business District. Just want to give a quick update about COVID vaccinations. The city managers of all Gross Points and Harper Woods are working with Wayne County Commissioner Tim Colleen regarding our turn for providing residents with COVID vaccinations. And so we're currently in process and discussion with Wayne County right now. We're still being told that it could be our turn in three weeks, and the county likes to have one central location for those COVID vaccinations. We have reached out to the school district and other areas that have large parking lots that would be easier to have access of in and out for those residents to get the vaccination. Public Works Building, right now, city is still meeting with the architect contractor for updates on permits and subcontract availability, timing, and schedules. City Hall Building, we had Spicer with a pre-bid meeting with vendors and toured City Hall. Master Plan update. It's been a great response from the community. We've had over five hundred responses to the survey, so kudos GPP. And that you can see that on GPPmasterplan.com. MKSK, the Master Plan Consultant, said for city this, our size, this is really good turnout, so again, kudos to you. The deadline for this application will end on March twenty-second. We have opened City Hall to the public that started today, so we have printed off as well for those that cannot go online. Paper surveys that are available in the Lavine Center, City Hall Lobby, and the library for those who would like to participate. And that still is up to March twenty-second will be the deadline. So come out to City Hall, those areas, and we'd be glad to show you where they are. As well tomorrow, mark your calendars. Bob Gibbs of the Gibbs Planning Group will be speaking at six-thirty PM. His Zoom information is on our city website. He conducted a similar presentation for the Chamber of Commerce back in two thousand and sixteen. All, and this was of all the gross points in the business areas. All are welcome to attend. This will be an important discussion to see where the Gross Point Park, you know, the communities navigate the post-COVID world and what we should be directing our focus on once that, you know, we get past there, so. Oh, and we're meeting with MKSK to finalize community lunch hour meetings to be coming soon. I imagine those will end up being virtual and they'll be throughout different times of the day. And we'll have those in our newest communicator and issued out through our media channels. Jane Blayhut and I, Finance Director, are still ongoing with our budget at this time, meeting with department heads. I'm going to provide an update later on Public Safety Director. April Council Agenda, I just have for consideration of council. There will be a consideration for an extension of trash services by Green for Life. Dog Park, the work order for the Dog Park isn't agreed to. The city attorney completed his review of the agreement between the donor, Mr. Joe Backer, and the city before we proceed with Site A. March twenty-fifth, the Recreation Commission is having a special meeting to consider adoption of those Dog Park rules. And then I want to provide an update on Chili Fest. From all accounts, this was a resounding success. Very appreciated from businesses and residents. It was very well attended. It was a good test run to find our comfort level of outdoor events. And Mr. Chad Craig, Park Director, and I were presented the idea of a St. Patty's Day event after the success of Chili Fest and we decided to go ahead with that, which will be on Saturday, March thirteenth on Kirchville between Lake Point and Beacons Field with several social district permittees, including Atwater, Rustic Cabins, The Bricks, Red Crown, and please visit all businesses within that area. Should be a lot of fun, so hope to see you there. We also are in the discussion of a marshmallow drop that was delayed due to COVID last year. We can believe that we can make that happen. Details to follow. And as well, you know, as we're moving further and further into opening up more events and such, we're hoping to bring these events to Charlevoye and other districts as well, so looking forward to having that. With that said, Mayor Danner, that's my report.
Thank you, City Manager. Anybody in council have a question for the City Manager? Councilmember McConnell?
I have two. One is just awareness. I do have a tele town hall this Wednesday at six PM on the vaccination process. I know you're looking at what relevant assistance have, but it is related to vaccines. We have the two top health officials from Wayne County, as well as Wayne County Commissioner Colleen. So that's Wednesday at six PM. So I wanted to mention that, so as we, and the person who's actually going to be managing the process for the park is one of the panelists, so I wanted to mention that. And then also, is there any way to get anything additional in the communicator? I'm thinking specifically, we had talked about a communication survey. I don't know if it's possible to get that in there. I wouldn't mind seeing some, at least the survey results from Sustain GPP as a nudge for people to support the businesses too. But I know it's a condensed version, so those are the two comments I had. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else before we move on? Councilmember Flut?
Just following up on what Councilmember McConnell said, I'm also very glad to hear we're going to get an issue of the communicator out. Communications Committee has talked a lot about just ensuring we're doing everything we can to reach out to everybody in the community. There's a lot of discussion on Facebook, but there are a lot of people that are not on Facebook, and so they're not always hearing everything. And the communicator is probably the best way to get information out across the board. I also would like to see the information from Sustain GPP in the communicator if possible. I think that's Councilmember McConnell's initiative. I think it's very important and she's made some big strides there already. The other thing is the master plan. I know we really want community involvement. I'm really glad that's going to be in the communicator so that people know what's going on in this year-long process. And it is going to help engage some of those people that maybe are not already aware of it. The one question I had was, one of the things that MKSK had talked about was having resident ambassadors to reach out to certain groups within our community. And they had asked people to actually email and let them know if they were interested in volunteering for those types of positions. And I don't think I've heard anything else about that. So is that something that we're still working on?
I believe it's something that they're still working on right now. You know, I don't have an update right now on exactly where that process is. I do know that they were certainly looking for volunteers. You know, so certainly if you have a list of, if you have volunteers that are interested, please have them email me, citymanager@grosspointpark.org, and I'll talk with MKSK as well about that. So absolutely, if we can get volunteer help, you know, I'm all for it.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Rowland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. One quick question. Nick, the City Hall update, does that include the parking lot? Is that getting regraded or refinished at all?
No, that's something that we'll probably look at Councilmember Rayland when it comes to our road projects as we get into the summer and the fall. That's probably, and that's right now being a strong consideration. And then we're also looking into side note, but Patterson Park Parking Lot is in really rough shape that we'd like to work on this year.
Awesome. Let me comment quickly on that for clarification. The City Hall renovation is being funded through a revenue bond that was passed by council and is going to be, the bond is going to be serviced out of general fund revenues without additional, any additional taxes for the residents. Our road program, on the other hand, which includes alleys and parking lots, is funded by a special millage that was voted on by the, by our voters and approved. And we're in the process of year by year using, allocating those funds to the most urgent needs. So the City Hall Parking Lot will be part of that program in turn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, since the library was just remodeled, and I'm looking forward to seeing that. If that, we're waiting for that to really redo the parking lot because it reminds me of some of my streets in India. Pretty bad, and Patterson is the same way, so I appreciate addressing those. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else before we move on? Okay, let's see if we can do our committee and commission reports here. That's our next item on the agenda. We have had many committee and commission meetings. I think I have, I don't know, there's several of them here. We'll go in turn roughly in chronological order of when I had a note of when they occurred. And I'll start with Planning Commission. Councilmember Hodges, would you like to comment on the commission meeting that was on February ninth?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The commission, as you stated, under the leadership of Chairman Malik Goodwin, did occur on February ninth for the primary purpose of kicking off the master planning effort with a community visioning session. MKSK, the planning firm that was hired by the city, led a discussion of more than one hundred and fifty residents. It included an overview of the process, an informative data set that helps props, that helps prop the process up, and a structure that was designed to capture quality community input like polling mechanisms and the like. In terms of next steps, you heard City Manager Seislin mention the sessions that are coming up, the survey that is open till March twenty-second, and the session that is convening tomorrow evening with Mr. Bob Gibbs at six-thirty PM. In addition to that, I would just encourage the community to visit the website and also look at the interactive map where you can insert your feedback and your thoughts for the future of the community. All are welcome to those elements, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, the Personnel Committee did not actually meet, but in the last meeting, we directed the Chair of the Personnel Committee to take some steps as it relates to the City Manager Performance Review Process. So I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Robson to update us on that process.
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, the council did. On Wednesday, City Manager Seislin and I will be meeting to craft a a draft memorandum, manager goals, objectives, and areas of improvement. That draft, when completed, will be sent to council members for their feedback. And a date will be set for a council session, six months hence, to assess the progress of the goals, objectives, and improvements, areas of improvements. As Mayor mentioned, this task was assigned to me at the February first council meeting through a council motion. So I've been working on that. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from other council members, and I deeply appreciate that. So we are moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Beautification Commission met, I believe, on February tenth. Councilmember Rowland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we actually met last week as well. So we have our website, we'll be adding the award slideshow very soon. We're looking to submit some good content for the communicator as well to catch everyone up over the last twelve, sixteen months. The tree ordering form will be included on that as well. There's some really good news. Brian Coulter, our Arborist, was named Arborist of the Year from the International Society of Arbor Culture of Michigan, which is fantastic and well-deserved. We are also now a Growth City recipient again, which is above and beyond the Tree City Award, which we receive for over thirty-five years now. We got this Growth City Award, which is one of only six cities in the state to get it. Which is, we got this, we have our virtual Arbor Day celebration last year that the commission put on with the posters from the fourth graders. We have a wonderful drone tree coverage video that we have, that we created last year. And our new information station at City Hall with about a dozen brochures on plant health and tree health, how to plant a tree properly and things like that. So I encourage our residents to take a look at that when they come to City Hall. Our Arbor Week festivities and our posters have been delivered to all the Gross Point Park Public Schools, fourth grade classrooms. And they're available by contacting myself or Pat Deck for any of the kids that are not at a Gross Point Park Public School. Those are due on April twentieth. April thirtieth is Arbor Day this year. May eighth, we're going to be having our Spring Plant Exchange at the Tompkins Center. COVID permitting, of course, but we're planning, that's in planning stages right now. And then at the May tenth council meeting, we'll be giving out the Arbor Week awardees honored. And our next beautification committee meeting, commission meetings, April twenty-second at seven PM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. A lot of good work by the Beautification Commission. Next ordinance review, most of the results of the ordinance review committee meeting are going to be discussed as as potential ordinance amendments later, but Councilmember Reed, would you like to give us a short report?
Sure, that's the bulk of the committee report will be addressed under New Business with four draft ordinances presented to council. The only thing I would add is that the City Manager updated the committee regarding the codification of our ordinances. And the council should expect a further discussion during the budgeting process, if not before. That's an item that we discussed the last time as well. It's just a it's a tool for the city to have. It's an online tool, it's a searchable process for our city ordinance is just to modernize that process. So that's all for the ordinance review committee, other than what we will be discussing in New Business.
Okay, thank you. The Diversity and Inclusion Ad-Hoc Committee I have is having met on February twenty-third. Councilmember Rowland, would you like to give us an update on that ad hoc committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, just in, diversity is also gender and race, and we always say age and physical capability and things. So honoring International Women's Day, I'd like to thank the women on council. And I look forward to the day we don't have to have this special day for this. As many of us in our community celebrate the women and girls in our lives every day, it's just the state of the world that we're in today. So I'd like to share some highlights of the Diversity Inclusion Initiative that occurred on February twenty-third. We had about seventy people in attendance. That's amazing. Our agenda included discussion and presentations around a GPP Community Diversity Survey. Councilmember McConnell and myself will be putting that together and sending that out in the coming month. The GPP Administration Diversity Updates from City Manager Nick Seislin and Interim Chief Lieutenant Jim Bostick. That some of that, the city manager shared earlier, they indicated some training that they'll be doing around diversity and some progress being made there. We had Jedana Dingus on there with her resident point of view. Hearing from Jedana was very powerful, and I appreciate her feeling safe to share with such emotion about the things that she's going through and what occurred at her place. We had a WeGP kind of introduction for the first time in a council in a while. They gave us a hate hasn't, has no home here rally details, as well as all the programs that they support and the good, the good work that they're doing as well. And that was from Carla Kealan, so thanks to that. The Gross Point Public School System Diversity Updates were given by Board President Joe Hurd. So thank you for him for stepping out. I know he's in a meeting currently right now, as there's, there are on Monday as well. Joe also discussed the new superintendent search and the community engagement around that. Everyone is welcome to attend these sessions and have input. The next session is this Thursday at five PM. I think they have information on the school's website at GPPSS. Tressa Galloway shared her anti-bullying campaign called Love My Laces. This is a pretty powerful and impactful activity, which can impression on young kids and adults alike. That'll be presented to the principals at Mayor DeFer and Pierce later this month as well. And hopefully we can get that started in GPP. Another, a powerful personal experience was shared by, shared by a resident during our open floor session. This involved a black male GPP resident. He had never shared this incident with anyone but his wife, and he felt comfortable and supported enough to do so on this evening. Involved a public safety vehicle following him around town, as well as the officer following and observing him by foot near Cornwall. Then finally parked near his home to observe him going to the home that he stated he lived at. I'm not going to go into all the details, but that is one of the goals of this initiative that we're aiming to achieve, creating a safe space to share. This initiative is already proving to be something very impactful and relevant. I want to thank all of you that attended, those that spoke, those that shared the meeting with info with others, and those that emailed me to say thanks and ask how they can be a part of this moving forward. So I'm looking to pursue this initiative, become an official committee with an agenda item discussion in our next council meeting, and I'll bring that up officially in our new business. Our next Diversity and Inclusion meeting is tentatively scheduled for the last week in April. Much more to come from me and our other council members, Councilmember Larry Reed and Councilmember Darcy McConnell on there as well. And some of the next steps that we're looking to do are create that Community Diversity Survey, crafting a diversity policy for Gross Point Park. We have potential guest presenters already scheduled, affirmations in Ferndale, which is the LBG LGBTQ Community Center, the Helm Senior Center. They envisioned a one-stop-shop organization that would help residents remain in their own homes with dignity and independence, if you're not familiar with them. The Detroit Area Agency on Aging, creating aging-friendly neighborhoods through nutrition, health, and wellness and senior independence, and little lobbyists who seek to protect and expand the rights of children who have complex medical needs and disabilities through advocacy, education outreach. So we have some very powerful people coming and getting involved. As always, please reach out to me about anything at any time regarding this initiative or anything else. I also want to read a statement, a highlight of statement from the Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP branch on police hiring practices, on police response to complaints by citizens of color. I'm just going to give this one paragraph that I think is very powerful. "The time is always right to do right. Time is up for perpetuation of a status quo that does not serve all equally. Perception of injustice is often more than an appearance. Oftentimes, it is a reality. Members of the Gross Point and Harper Woods NAACP branch demand that public safety departments look like the communities they are sworn to protect and serve. We need all public safety departments to take all threats of ethnic intimidation and domestic terrorism against citizens more seriously. We need public safety departments to take citizens of color seriously. We can and must do better for all people of all racial backgrounds living and working in the Five Points and the surrounding communities. Hate and casual attitude towards acts of hatred against African Americans, Americans and people of color must stop." That's all I wanted to share. I thank you for your time, and I guess I know Cynthia had emailed that to council. I'm not sure it was going to be read, so I told her I'd save that part from our committee report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. I wanted to, I also want to thank you for the call out early in your discussion about International Women's Day. And that day is to celebrate the achievements of women. And the official color is purple, and a few of us either intentionally or by accident are wearing something that is reasonably close to purple. And I'd like to congratulate the four women on our council for their achievements in the political world and in other areas of their lives. So I think it's definitely something to be celebrated. So thanks. So moving on to the Sustainability Committee, Councilmember Flut?
Thank you. And I also wanted to mention, because I am Council's MML, Michigan Municipal League representative, that doesn't come up very often, but I will be attending the Capitol Conference, which is an annual event. It was virtual last year. It's going to be virtual again this year, but that's actually next week, and I will be going to some virtual sessions and hopefully learning some useful things and taking some notes and bringing that back to the City Manager. Regarding sustainability, at the City Manager's suggestion, we actually were joined by Brian Coulter, the City Forester, and Brian is going to be an official part of the Sustainability Committee from now on, and I know he's going to bring a lot of expertise to, to what we're working on. The City Manager is going to continue working with Patrick Ryan from DTE. DTE has $120 million set aside to help cities and organizations assess, I wanted to use the word audit, but he felt very strongly that the word was assess, all of our facilities, all of our buildings, and help us find ways to make energy savings. So Nick has been working with Patrick Ryan. They will eventually actually provide an energy manager to help us go through, first of all, City Hall, and hopefully apply some of the suggestions to what we're doing as we're doing renovations on City Hall. They will also eventually assess other city buildings, and then finally will offer suggestions for what we can do with that new DPW facility as we make our final construction plans. So again, this is something DTE does for free. They will be providing an energy manager, and they actually have a whole group of people that, this is what they do, is they, they analyze what we have in place and try to make it better. The City Manager and the City Forester are working on what we can do to go pesticide-free on our city grounds, and they were telling us, we actually have had basically a robot lawnmower on the City Hall grounds for a little while now. It was donated by Camelot Landscaping. That seems to be working well, and they're going to try out that same area, the grounds around City Hall, as a pesticide-free area. Now, we're not sure exactly how long it's going to take, one year or two, you know, two full seasons or, or two annual rotations to see if we're happy with what we get by going pesticide-free. But the test plot is going to be there around City Hall, and we're, we're going to see what it looks like going chemical-free. If we are using pesticides, they are going to be natural, organic pesticides. We're going to see if we're happy with those results. We will probably go to residents as well, once that is done, and ensure that our residents are happy with those results, and then we will look at expanding that program to our parks and other city areas. The SCAP Center is going to be putting some sustainability initiatives in place, and I actually asked, that was one, one of the reasons why I asked for an update on the SCAP Center, so that that could be discussed later on tonight, as we go further down the agenda. One other thing that Sustainability talked about was there, there's an organization or a, a challenge called the Michigan Green Communities Challenge, and we talked about whether we wanted to try to meet that certification. And ultimately, what we decided was that we're going to start off going for bronze level certification. We would need to be, meet six requirements that have been laid out in this challenge. We already have two of them already. We're conducting audits, and we've already established a sustainability team. I think there are some other markers that we can meet as well, and hopefully at our next meeting, we'll work with the City Manager to determine what those goals are, so that we can work toward those six goals and then be bronze certified. The city is going to start working on a sustainability page for the city website, and I asked that each member of the Sustainability Committee send Nick and Leah three to five items that they would suggest would be on that website, and so hopefully that's going to be done this week, and then Nick and Leah can start working on choosing those items that will go on the web, the webpage. Sorry, I think I said website. It's going to be a page on the city website. And then the last thing we wanted to do was have some actual action items that we could do prior to our next meeting. So our two action items for this rotation are going to be determining if we have enough bike racks in our public spaces, if this is something that the master plan needs to address, or if we can determine that adding more bike racks might be the first step toward encouraging people not to drive all over the city or into our business districts. And the other action item is for our Recreation Director Chad Craig to determine what the cost would be to add recycling bins into our parks and into our business districts. Our next meeting is set for April 14th at 6:00 PM. That's a Wednesday, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I know that our Ethics Review Board met late in February. Liaison from, from the city administration for that board is our city attorney, wasn't able to be with us tonight. I don't know that he submitted us, submitted anything, but I know that the primary focus of that meeting was, was finalizing procedures for that board. City Manager, did you have anything further to offer?
Yes, and Assistant Attorney Young has as well. She was in contact with Jake, and so, yes, they did adopt rules. They also discussed forms that would be placed on the city website regarding filing that ethics complaint in the process for doing so. I'll let Caitlin jump in if I missed anything. Otherwise, I think that was about it.
Okay, thanks. Looks like you covered it. I don't have any others that I miss anyone. That seemed like a lot, so hopefully I didn't miss anybody. Okay, thank you. It's now about 9:40, and we've now gotten to the point where we can go to unfinished business. So we've got a lot of business yet to address. The actual voting business of the council doesn't come up until new business, so we've got a lot of work to do yet. I suspect, though, that people would like to have a short recess. I see some nods. So it is about 9:40 now. Let's see if we can be back here about 9:50 to reconvene. So I'll call a recess for about 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
For anyone to review. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Denner, and members of council. In your packet, you had a letter attached from Interim Executive Director Jamie Ray Turnbull and members from their engineering team that I requested if they could provide documents, and they did provide me some slight edits to this, which I'll add into when we're discussing. But I'll start with the letter for fundraising. Since launching the public phase of fundraising in October 2020, the URF has achieved success raising $30 million, $30 million, $14,301. To add with that, major gift came from the Shields family, and they established as well the Mark and Molly Vilade for the SCAP Center Diversity Equity Inclusion Initiatives as part of recent donations. URF has received 35 contributions from donors around the county. SCAP Center, you know, Regional Arts Center dedicates stimulating high-quality performance visual arts, performance home for the Detroit Concert Choir, Detroit Medical Orchestra, Gross Point Community Chorus, Gross Point Symphony Orchestra, Gross Point Theater, and proposed base, proposed community-based partners include Detroit Public Television, Michigan Opera Theater, and the Mosaic Youth Theater of Detroit. Groundbreaking for the facility is set for fall 2021, and they have a newly launched website, which you can visit at scapcenter.com for updates. So that is the fundraising update I got from Mrs. Turnbull. And then I'll just do a brief run-through because it's quite an extensive document from the Smith Group, who actually is the engineer and architect, part of the architect team for the SCAP Center. And so this letter was submitted to me by representatives of CBRE and Smith Group. One of the things that the SCAP team released to us is that they're looking to increase stormwater runoff on their facility. The site previously, that will be the SCAP Center, was 87% impervious at its estimated high in 2002. The proposed project will be 74% impervious, which is about a 15% improvement due to parking several buildings and other areas being changed. Then I'm going to go down to a little bit about water quality and peak runoff, and I'll read a quick blip here. "To support water quality and peak runoff rate reduction objectives, a bioretention area will be constructed on the east side of the east parking lot to support peak runoff rate reduction and to help improve that quality of stormwater runoff. This area will consist of approximately 18 inches of sandy plant mix over a 12-inch stone drainage bed. Plants and trees will allow uptake of stormwater and evapotranspiration." Say that 10 times fast. And then, you know, from there, we have some other discussion regarding bioretention through cuts of the parking lot, and that the current expectation is that the drainage from the eastern half of the parking lot will be directed to the bioretention area, and bioretention of this type of filters runoff to the point that meets the Gross Point Park Water Quality Standard. Gross Point Park has a water quality ordinance that requires treatment of the first inch of rainfall runoff to a quality level that remove, removes 80% of total suspended solids. They claim that this project will meet the standard using the bioretention area noted above and a manufactured water quality device. The facility's energy conservation measures and building material selections include the following strategies for sustainability outlined below, which there's nine bullet points, if you look on our city packet that's online. Many of the items' measures are in reference to a share code baselines, the country's energy code. One highlight I'll make in here is the easy one boilers. They have high-efficiency condensing boilers that will be operating at 91% efficiency compared to baseline boiler operating at 80% efficiency. And then I'm going to skip down here about water quality device that they'll be using. It'll be placed at the most downstream point of the storm sewer prior to connection with the public sewer, which is Gross Point Parks. Water quality structures work by separating suspended solids from stormwater through hydrodynamic force in which water swirls in the structure, causing the solids to settle out of the water. And the city Gross Point Park sewer infrastructure in the project area is a combined sanitary and storm system. Much of the city now has separated sewers, and it's possible that sewers in the project area will be separated in the future. Therefore, storm and sanitary sewage will be routed in separate systems on the project site, and will can be combined in a manhole just before the east property line. Mayor Denner and council, that's the update that was received by the URF and Jamie Ray Turnbull.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions. Councilmember Flut?
Yeah, so the reason I had asked for an update on fundraising was obviously because I wanted to know how progress was going, and they seem to have upped their, their final goal to 43 million, from 33 to 43 million. And then I had a question about donation, actual donations versus pledges, because if you go through the website, you can only make a pledge. You can't actually make a donation. So Jamie Ray isn't here. Are you able to answer those questions, or do I need to email her?
I'll, I'll do it. I can, Councilmember Flut. I believe I do have that the overall goal was 43 million. Their capital goal, I know, was 33, and their amount raised to date was about 24. Their amount still to raise was nine. Their endowment goal was 10 million, with the amount raised to date about 6 million, and amount still to raise about 4 million.
Right. Okay, yeah, that, so my question was, I, I believe they started off, 35 million was supposed to fund construction and the endowment, and now on the website, just looking at it today, they've raised their goal to 43 million. So I was just curious why that was. But my other question was, when you click the donate button on the website, you can only do a pledge. So I think it's important for us to know, is this, you know, this total amount of 30 million that's already been raised, has that been pledged, or has, is that actually in the bank? So that's the kind of update I was looking for, was to know where they actually stand and how close they are getting to actually being ready for groundbreaking.
Yeah, I'd have to get Jamie Ray Turnbull on the line to answer those exact questions for you regarding that, but certainly I can put her in touch.
I'll, I'll email her. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else before we move on? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Just as I've continued to monitor this project, there are two key points that I would like the community to be aware of. One, the importance of Trombley potentially becoming a programming partner. As we all know, that's an asset that we're all committed to ensuring remains viable. Those discussions do continue, including an upcoming walkthrough of the site to determine if it can support that programming. And then, secondly, coordinating with our neighboring community, they do continue to meet with Jefferson East Inc., including a recent meeting with Board Chair John Stroh. And then, thirdly, I did see some discussion on Facebook recently regarding how artists can get involved with the project, and the direction given was for community members to reach out to Jamie Ray Turnbull at jrt@jarturnbull.com, if in fact you're interested in engaging. So thank you for the opportunity to share those key points.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next bit of unfinished business, which is the Public Safety Director update. We've heard a lot of commentary on that topic, but let's find out what, what the process is and where we are, and get an update from our City Manager, City Manager Seisler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So I, I do have some brief comments I'd like to discuss with the public before I start with my director update, and I'd like to share those with you now. A lot has happened since our last city council meeting, particularly drawing attention to our Public Safety Department, and I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to make some comments regarding such. "It is my sincere hope and my renewed goal that each and every resident of our city feels safe, protected, and empowered to call on us whenever they need us, the Public Safety Department. The decision Ms. Dingus made not to call Public Safety after her neighbor intimidated her with a disgusting symbol of hate means that we have work to do in our department and our city. So what are we doing? First, Gross Point Park Public Safety will continue to support Ms. Dingus, both proactively by assigning additional patrols near the home and by responding with speed and compassion if and when she needs us in the future. We have met with Ms. Dingus to discuss the investigation and reinforce the city's full support. We continue to keep an open dialogue with Ms. Dingus. Our entire Public Safety Department will conduct a racial awareness, implicit bias, and cultural competency training next week with Mr. Darnell Blackburn, a nationally-recognized leader in development of training and ethical standards for law enforcement officers. Mr. Blackburn is the founder of Be The Change, initiative to encourage more diversity within the law enforcement community. We've made several changes to our recruiting and hiring process in anticipation of hiring our next Public Safety Director and Public Safety Officers. We have a diverse pool of qualified candidates, a third-party consultant to support the process of EMTCO, a city manager with a public safety background, and a member of the National Association of Black Law Enforcement Executives, Noble, joining me for the interviews after EMTCO. We're talking with other public safety and police departments to be good neighbors with our neighboring communities, including the city of Detroit. And I had a great conversation with the city of Detroit Chief James Craig, and he expressed his willingness to assist the city of Gross Point Park when and if that director is selected. I am committed to positive change, as is City Hall. We cannot change the past, but we can learn from it and move forward together as a community. Lastly, I want to reinforce that hate has no home in Gross Point Park, has no place here. The support our community has shown for Ms. Dingus is a reflection of the loving and inclusive culture we're working to nurture and protect. Thank you for allowing me to speak. With that said, I'm going to provide further update on the Public Safety Director Report. In your packets, council and mayor, you had a summary that was provided by me regarding the Public Safety Director update. The Public Safety Director Position Announcement closed on February 22nd. City Administration had applications from 14 individuals who cover a diverse background and initial- And initial review of the applications is complete and those were sent to EMTCO. The list of applicants and their information have been sent to EMTCO, who are currently identifying assessors who do not have a conflict with a candidate to conduct the oral board interviews that have backgrounds in public safety, police, and fire. So we actually have people just fire, just police, just public safety as part of those assessors. The oral board interviews will focus on the candidate's knowledge, skills, and abilities. And and all candidates answered will be scored. The oral boards are currently scheduled to take place on, scratch that, it'll be just March thirty-first. Upon completion of the oral boards, EMTCO will provide the list of candidates with final scores to the city manager, which is myself and my review panel. The city manager will then interview candidates with a panel of a city manager, police commissioner, and a public safety director, who's a member of Noble. Final candidates will be vetted through an extensive, independent, third-party background check. And dependent upon the background check and compensation slash benefits offer, city administration hopes to have the new Public Safety Director hired by mid-April. That is my report, and I welcome your comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Councilmember Fluit?
So we've had several residents reach out with a lot of different opinions and ideas that they wanted to share. Is any of this process going to be done publicly? Recorded or, you know, done in a way so that the interview questions or the respondents answers are maybe not tied to their identity, but they are available to the public? I know several people have suggested ways to do that. You know, breaking it down to candidate A, B, C, D, that kind of thing. Are we going to be doing anything like that? Or are we still considering anything like that where the public will be able to be at all engaged in the interview process?
So yes and no. When it comes to public interviews, no. This process will be conducted by EMTCO and myself with my panel. However, you know, what I'm hearing obviously from the community and, you know, and obviously that I reached out to you as members of the council, that certainly is something I'm paying closely attention to in regards to what you're looking for in that Public Safety Director, and that's really important to me. And as well, I am looking at opportunities that I could provide some more insight, or I shouldn't say insight. Missing a word right now, sorry, but more information about those candidates. So that still is being explored at this time. So yes, I know certainly some members of the community are very interested in this process. I completely understand. But I also believe that we are really compiling a very fair review process, especially having someone like a third party that I'm not involved with at all. They actually interview those candidates alone. I'm not, you know, so they take them over to their services. I then have provided a list, and I'm going to listen to that list. And if there's the top three or four candidates in there, those are going to be the people that I would like to interview. And I believe with their backgrounds in the work that they've done with other communities, I certainly want to take that with them, so. But certainly, I welcome your comments and the communities with us.
Are you willing to? Certainly, you're not going to guarantee that you're going to ask questions that are that are given to you by the community. But are you willing to look at questions and concerns that the community sends to you and take those suggestions and make them part of your interview process when you're actually interviewing the candidates? If if there are certain things that the community feels are important and then they would like to have included in the interview process, are you willing to accept those emails and suggestions from our residents?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Mayor Prochem Rapsin?
City Manager Sizlin. How many applicants are there?
There were fourteen applicants, Councilmember Rapsin.
And is it a diverse group?
It is a very diverse group.
Male, female?
I just
I can comment, it's only a diverse group.
Make any, the city is prohibited from making certain statements relating to or disclosing their race, religion, and sex.
I understand. I stand corrected, but it is a diverse pool.
That is correct, Councilmember Rapsin, is a diverse pool.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. Just a question on the memo that you gave us. EMTCO will be doing the the oral boards and then the scoring. And you said that they will provide you with a list of candidates with final scores. You're you're going to be selecting the candidates from the complete list, or are they giving you their only their top candidates?
So it'll only be the top candidates, Councilmember Reed. So I provide that list to them. They go ahead and interview all those candidates, and then they're going to say, Nick, here's the top three. You'll want to interview these guys, you know, people.
Okay, so they're they're going to, if I just, I just want to understand the, they're going to narrow the list of candidates for you to interview. You're not going to have
Correct, yes. No saying that. That is EMTCO that is going to go ahead and, you know, narrow down that list for me.
Okay, so I guess the concern that I'm I'm hearing maybe from other council and from the pub, from the residents who spoke, will any of the public input, like I'm sending you every email I get on this, is any of that going into EMTCO's scoring analysis? That's not?
No, no, that that will be strictly for myself and my interview panel.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, seeing no more hands. Thanks. Thank you very much for that update. I know that it's been a lot of work to construct this process. I think it's been being done very professionally with the kind of outside support that's appropriate. And I look forward to down the road, your being able to welcome our new new director, wherever that may be. So thank you very much. Let's move on. The next item of business is council comment on unfinished business. I don't know we have some of that now or not. So councils, do you have anything at this stage related to unfinished business that you want to comment on? We also, of course, have council comment after new business. Seeing no hands. We have, move on to new business. And new business starts off with a review of the annual public safety report. This is a public safety heavy meeting. The council, the public safety report was in your in your package, of course. And I'm going to turn this over to Inter Chief Bostock to to give us some of the highlights of that report. This is a report just for everybody's information that is prepared annually by the Director of Public Safety that summarizes many key metrics about the performance of our Public Safety Department, as well as shares information about the the organization and the roster in public safety and considerable information about statistics as it relates to crimes and arrests. So I'm going to turn it over to Inter Chief Bostock to give us some of the highlights. Nope, I can't hear you. You don't look muted. Like, still can't hear you. Did you turn your volume?
What if you try muting and unmuting again?
Still can't hear you. Oh, boy. Perhaps your, the volume on your device needs to be turned up. And if we don't. But you appear to be unmuted, but for some reason we can't hear you. I'm going to make this discussion, this suggestion, given that we've got this technical impasse, and and move move the review of the annual public safety report to after our work on the amendments. That'll give you a chance, perhaps, to leave the meeting and come back in. And hopefully that'll reset everything. We'll be able to hear you when we get to that. So let's, let's come back to that item in in a moment and move on to the discussion of the four ordinances amend ordinance amendments that have been prepared through our ordinance review committee and our city attorney for our our consideration. We'll do these one at a time. I'm going to rely upon Councilmember Reed and Assistant City Attorney Young to to get us through that, but I'm going to turn the meeting over at this point to Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Okay, so the first ordinance is two twenty-two, and this relates to the composition of the Planning Commission, and this is a continuation of the discussion from, I believe it was our January meeting. And the we discussed the composition of the Planning Commission. The easiest fix to our ordinance to make it in compliance with state statute, as well as to have a Planning Commission that has seven voting members, was to retain the six resident members and have one ex officio member from the council with the administrative officer of the city serving as a liaison and non-voting member. So that's what you have before you. Part of the discussion that we had was whether to have a nine-member or a seven-member planning commission. That was part of our discussion also at our last council meeting, and we discussed that as a committee. I'll invite my committee members to weigh in. One of the discussion items that we had was that we did not see the need to have the Planning Commission exceed in membership the elected body of the council. So that is why we have proposed seven members. That's consistent with a lot of our peer communities. So I think with that, I'll ask Assistant City Attorney Young if she has anything to add. Otherwise.
I think with that, with that proposed amendment before us, it would make sense to have a motion to approve, and then we can open discussion. So I will accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Any any discussion before we take a vote? I would comment that I think that the process that came up with this amendment was well considered. And I know a lot of work went into it. It's not, it was, it was not an automatic, this is the answer. And I do appreciate all the work that went into it, and I support this change. Any other discussion? And my Councilmember, Rayland?
So I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understood through through following Planning Commission for the last two years that we were out of compliance with the state. This will put us in compliance with the state.
It does put us in compliance with the state. As to whether or not we were technically out of compliance is open to discussion. It's a pretty gray part of the statute, but this makes us, as I understand it clearly, in compliance without question.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. We have an amended ordinance. And
I didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We skipped somebody. Councilmember Fluit?
Yes, I vote yes.
I am so sorry.
That's okay.
I'm feeling late, and sometimes you go down your list and your eyes skip one. So we do, motion is adopted unanimously. We now have an amendment to our ordinance on on the city Planning Commission membership. To put us in in compliance and practice with this ordinance. As mayor, I'll step down, and the remaining currently appointed members of the Planning Commission will continue as the seven-member Planning Commission as specified by the ordinance. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, the next ordinance you have before you, ordinance two twenty-one, is to amend the city code to address emergency electrical generators. This is a carryover from our last city council meeting where we actually had acting as a zoning board of appeals a variance for the placement of an electrical generator. This was requested by city administration. And and this, the discussion that we had, I mean, we had this discussion in ordinance review, but I think we also had it to a certain extent at our last council meeting that when the code was originally adopted, generators were more recent and not as popular. And so at the time, generators were required to be in the rear of the property. This, this allows the generator to be on the side of the property with written consent to the installation from the immediate adjacent neighbor within a period of sixty days preceding issuance of the permit for the installation. If this, if we pass this ordinance, we won't have to deal with variances of this nature. So I I don't know if you're ready for a motion. If you are, I'll go ahead and make it.
Go ahead and make the motion.
Yeah, so I move that we approve ordinance two twenty-one dealing with emergency electrical generators.
Lots of support.
Lots of support. Just a quick comment from from my point of view. I've dealt with several of these over my years on council and most recently in our last council meeting. And I think Councilmember Reed summarizes where we started and where we came to on this. The other thing I point out is that this ordinance, as amended, more closely resembles our ordinance we have for air conditioners. So it's a very similar application, and I do support the change. Councilmember McConnell?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up during our committee meeting. I had asked City Manager Sizlin about the best practice in terms of the the fifteen feet. Did you have a chance to follow up to see if that we're sort of in compliance, we're in compliance with the best practice of the amount of space that's required from a household?
So depending on where you live, Councilmember McConnell, it definitely, there's a good best practice when it comes to, let's say, if we're in Oakland County, Macomb, where you're in, you know, brand-new cul-de-sacs, you know, you're looking at twenty, twenty-five feet, where the yards are much bigger. With our housing stock and challenges that we have, you know, fifteen feet's already kind of pushing it, but we believe overall, talking with Mr. Supple and looking at our other neighboring communities, fifteen feet will be more than fair. And then, obviously, we have a place in here to get neighbor consent, you know, so we feel very comfortable with this recommended change.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fluit?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. We have an amended ordinance. Thank you. Back to Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. You have before you ordinance number two twenty, which would amend our ordinance as it relates to dogs. The the specific change, this ordinance was changed within the last couple of years as our ordinance, our ordinances did not allow for dogs in the parks at all. There was a practice to that developed before my time. It apparently evolved from dogs to chase the geese away that allowed dog walking permits in the parks. We included that in our ordinance. Now, with the approval of the dog park at Patterson Park, the ordinance review committee is proposing an amendment to no longer allow dog walking permits at Patterson Park. That's the primary change with the ordinance proposal that you have before you. The sense of the committee was, and administration, this was supported by administration, that if we have a dog park at Patterson Park, we don't also need dog walking licenses, permits, I should say. So I guess if you're ready, I'll put a motion on the floor on that. So um, I guess if you're ready, I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor on that as well.
Your support?
Port.
Word from council member McConnell, discussion? Seeing none. Councilmember Fluid.
I just had a question about um, there seems to be some mystery about how people go about getting the dog walking passes. I know that they're limited. Um, can we explain what that process is?
Yes, so don't quote me on it, but I, I, I did uh, talk with the parks director. And we did add to our uh, park section of our website, the rules regarding these dog walking passes. Uh, this was something established by the former city manager. Uh, I, I couldn't give you the exact date. But I believe the number we're at right now is a little over a hundred. Uh, so simply put, you just have to uh, contact the Parks and Rec office. There's a waiting list. Um, and then you uh, you know, you're on that list and uh, you know, as it comes up, uh, you'll get a pass. So uh, I hope it's on there, because we just talked about it, but um, don't quote me on that yet, but uh, the rules as well.
Okay, so this, so as council member Reed uh, pointed out, this would effectively eliminate dog walking passes for Patterson. Once we get the, open a dog park, um, it does uh, continue to uh, permit the dog walking passes to be used as it relates to windmill. Um, and just also, as an aside, um, in addition to the dog walking passes at Windmill. We've always uh, permitted residents to get their dogs from the uh, on a leash, from their, from their vehicle to the, to their boats in the marina. So, so dogs under control, uh, on a leash have been in present Patterson, one form or another, since we've had a marina. Um, any other further discussion? Can you call the roll?
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Uh, yes, motion passes. We have an amended ordinance. Uh, we have one more. Uh, council member Reed.
Yes, um, you have before you ordinance number two twenty-three. Which is an ordinance to amend the code to incorporate statutory language required to enforce provisions of the Michigan Vehicle Code. This um, deals with the super drunk um. Uh, portions of the Michigan Vehicle Code, and with your permission, I'd like to ask Assistant City Attorney Young. To elaborate, as she also serves as our prosecuting attorney, um, and I think she can explain it from um, an experience level better than I can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Assistant City Attorney Young.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Reed. Um, so as currently written, um. Our code incorporates and adopts the Michigan Vehicle Code um, in general. But in order to charge um, defendants with a blood alcohol content of zero point one seven or more. Um, which carries an enhanced um, penalty of a hundred, of, up to a hundred and eighty days in jail. The um, city code needs to specifically enumerate the language um, set out in the motor vehicle code. Under MCL two five seven point six two five one C, um, so that it uh, specifically includes the language. Um, regarding the offense, um, the penalties and the violations. Um. As of the. Ordinance uh, review committee date, four of the nine um, drunk driving cases that the city saw. Um, could have been charged as um, super drunk BACs. So this would permit our officers to um, issue the enhanced charges there and keep those local versus um, sending them to Wayne County to be charged. Since they do exceed the ninety-three day misdemeanor. So um, it wouldn't impose any greater burden on the public safety department. It would just simply allow them to uh, charge under the enhanced uh. Operating while intoxicated charges.
Thank you. Um, with that, I would move adoption of ordinance two twenty-three incorporating statutory language required to enforce provisions of the Michigan Vehicle Code.
Sure, support?
Support.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Uh, I like this because it allows us to uh, uh, to pursue uh, penalties uh, if the violator is considered uh, under, you know, so-called super drunk. And I think that'll help us uh, to make our city safer. Um, any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. We have an amended uh, ordinance. Okay. Moving on, uh, I see that uh. Lieutenant Bostock has rejoined us.
Hopefully you can hear me now.
We can hear you now.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay, good.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to uh, I already gave the preamble, so I'm going to turn it over to, to you to uh, give us a, a summary of the uh, annual public safety report.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So on behalf of the members of the Department of Public Safety, it's my privilege tonight to present the annual report for the year twenty twenty. This report details department's activities, including crime, traffic, fire, and EMS statistics. Members of the department have and will remain ever dedicated to deterring crime and maintaining a safe community for all. Through proactive law enforcement and aggressive fighter suppression techniques. The number of officer awards and commendations only continues to accentuate their commitment to selflessly serve our community. Year twenty twenty had been one like no other in recent memory. The year brought a number of challenges, among them political discord, social unrest, COVID nineteen. Through it all, we continue to uphold high standards of service and professionalism that has become standard here in Gross Point Park. Overall, crime decreased a total of a hundred and twenty-eight crimes, a thirty-two percent decrease from twenty nineteen. Presumably due to the pandemic, the numbers of both index and non-index crimes fell significantly. There was an increase in reported assaults, drug crimes, drunk driving arrests, fraud, and identity thefts. Larcenies, auto theft, weapons offenses, and destruction of property crimes fell by almost twenty percent from the previous year. The investigation and prosecution of criminals is a responsibility of the Department Detective Bureau. Their attention to detail, dedication, and aggressive case investigations are a cornerstone of this department. The department works closely with other area departments and the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. And historically has a higher-than-average clearance rate for the indexed offenses. This is a direct result of the professional and thorough work by patrol officers and the detective bureau. The Action Auto Theft Task Force. They recovered over seven and a half million dollars worth of passenger vehicles last year alone, and another fifty-eight thousand dollars in commercial vehicles. Action continues to work closely with other state and county auto theft teams. And along with private sector partners in their efforts to reduce auto theft and insurance fraud. Twenty twenty fire-related calls increased by two percent from twenty nineteen. We reported four hundred and seventy responses to the state of Michigan. These responses include dwelling fires, mutual aid responses, smoke and gas investigations. Vehicle fires, carbon monoxide alarms, utility hazards, and ambulance runs. In twenty twenty, our EMTs responded to two hundred and eighty ambulance runs. Public safety officer Chris Jones, he retired in April of twenty twenty after more than twenty-five years of service. We thank him for his years of dedicated service and wish him well in his retirement. We also welcomed a new public safety officer, Nathan Jake Jacobini. Nathan previously served in the United States Navy and Coast Guard before joining our team in August of twenty twenty. Now, in closing, I would like to thank our residents. Businesses, city, and elected officials for your unwavering support. I'd also like to personally thank the men and women of this department who are committed to keep Gross Point Park a safe place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, uh, Lieutenant Chief Bostock. Uh, I have to comment, um. Just based on the time that I've been on council, this is uh, probably the uh, most favorable uh, public safety, annual public safety report that I've had the privilege to review. And I think it's an indication that uh, we do have an excellent uh, department based on outcomes. And um, that often has a lot to do with uh, the effectiveness, not only of the hiring process, but of the training process and the example set. So I appreciate uh, seeing this kind of a uh, favorable report. Uh, any other comments or questions for Lieutenant, uh, Mayor Protem Robson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to reflect the, the same message. I don't think I'm prone to exaggeration, but uh, this is the most impressive and encouraging report I've seen in my twenty-eight years on council. You know, we hear on the news about crime going up in a lot of different areas. Obviously not in our city, as the chief said, thirty-two percent uh, decrease in crime. Uh, uniform crime is at a five-year low. Zero armed robberies, zero unarmed robberies. Larcenies were down, by my count, thirty percent. Arrests were down sixty-six percent, and that's a good thing. Uh, means the, the department's doing something right. Motor vehicle thefts are down sixty percent from five years ago. malicious destruction of property down by more than fifty percent. Twelve home invasions last year. That's uh, I guess twelve too many, but one reason I ran for city council. A million years ago. Is, there is eighty to ninety home invasions a year, so we've come a long way since then. Real quickly, uh, Lieutenant Bostick. Uh, we have a, a well-trained department. Uh, as a respectful suggestion, maybe in future reports, there might be a report on annual training a- as well. Uh, speaking of training, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, uh, you have arranged for some diversity training. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
It's a certified program. Can you tell us just a little bit about it, with the specifics of it?
Um, I passed along the notes to city manager Sizlin. I believe he touched on that.
He did, he did.
But uh, Mr. Blackburn's credentials, um, he has a unique perspective of things. He's, he's got a law enforcement background, twenty years in the business. He's uh, he has a master's degree. He, he does these talks um, quite frequently. The departments around the area. He also works for the MCOS, the state uh, licensing board with the state of Michigan. And he is um, he is, he is very involved in their, in their training program.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant.
Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, interim chief Fostick again. Um, since I've been coming to council meetings, it seems like this just keeps going down. Every year, our crime goes down, and the reports are amazing to hear. Um, you guys are obviously very well-versed on keeping us safe. Um, and I want to say thank you again, uh, for all that you guys do. And I appreciate our interactions with uh, with your PSOs consistently every two weeks on my front porch. It's nice. Thank you.
You.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Just to add to that, leaders learn, and I'm glad you're committed to that, and it's also important to show we get right. So Lieutenant Bostock, it's comforting to know that when tragedy can strike, and that can happen at any time, that we've got a great team of professionals there to protect us. So thank you very much for your commitment to public safety, and know that it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything else? Councilmember Reed.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Denner. Yeah, I, I'd like to thank you as well. I'd like to thank you for um, this comprehensive report. Because it really illustrates um, things better than just hearing them. And I just have a quick question on the traffic motor vehicle violations, since you mentioned that um, some things were down due to COVID. And you had the total twenty twenty violations. I'm just curious how those, those numbers compared to prior years. I didn't see a comparison in the report. Is that um, consistent? Are they up, are they down?
Um, traffic violations, okay, so no violations um, are down.
Big, okay.
And, yeah, they, they were down. Um, you know, in the, in the midst of the pandemic. Not saying that we um, held back, but I mean, we, we did um, take into consideration. You know, the seriousness of, of the pandemic, and you know, we didn't want to um, unnecessarily um. Subject our officers or the public to any potential, um, you know. Getting of the virus, really, because we really didn't know much about it. So, you know, with, with that, you know, we did. Pull back on the reins a little bit as far as um, as far as the traffic uh, violations go. And um, I think twenty twenty-one will, will be a different story.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, council member McConnell.
Uh, it is good to see um, these numbers. Um, I, just to follow up a cou- couple things, um, what um. Councilmember Reed asked about, or what you just spoke to, actually. Uh, I know that a lot of uh, departments have um. Allowed the pandemic to inform their thinking about different approaches to the way they address different things. So I'm just curious to see if you have any thoughts about that. And then the other thing that uh, you, you mentioned in the report is a higher-than-average clearance rate. I don't know if you're willing to share the clearance rate. Um, I think that is uh, an important detail as well.
And as far as the clearance rate goes for, for last year, we, we were, I don't have it right in front of me, so I'll have to get back with you on that. Um, and your first, the first part of your question. Um, as far as like what we did differently, or what we, what we tried to do as, as a department, I mean, we, we took into consideration. You know, how the virus spreads, and you know, we, we had to make adjustments. We, we made some certain adjustments as far as um, responding to the non-priority runs. Um, for the first time in history, we probably took um, more uh, reports over the phone. Maybe more so for like identity theft or, or, you know, minor property issues. But short of that, I mean, we, we just didn't um. Unnecessarily put people in harm's way, and that included, you know, for the safety of the residents and the safety of our officers. If we go to a house, um, we would, we would prefer to meet them on the porch or, you know, so we could have some, some distancing. Um, so just little changes like that, and um, you know, knock on wood, we, we've uh. We're making it through this, and you know, we've, we've had a couple people, you know, come down with the COVID, but um, you know, for the most part, it didn't decimate us. I mean, we felt it a little bit, but um, right now, everybody's healthy.
I, I guess that, I'm just trying to clarify what I was trying to ask. I, I, I guess in, as it relates to doing those things differently that may yield some cost savings or different approaches for the future. Were there any uh, lessons learned in that regard?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, thank, council member Rowland.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Lieutenant Boska, I forgot to thank you for uh, the school safety. Um, I dropped my daughter off at school today, and I drove by three policemen uh, rotating around uh, the schools ma- basically curtsied and somerset. And uh, I want to say thank you. I know you, myself, and uh, city manager Nick have been talking about this every week. And um, I know a lot of parents are thankful for that. Uh, the, the breaking of rules that drop off and pick up are pretty radical. Um, keeping on the diversity in mind, since, you know, we're kind of in the spotlight, I'm wondering if, if the city keeps statistics on race. Uh, race during pullovers or violations. Do we have numbers on that?
Uh, tickets and, no, we don't track by sex and race.
Okay. Did, do you know if other cities do this as well? I've seen some statistics in some cities. I don't know if, if it'd be possible for us to do that, or why we don't do that.
Um, well, I mean, if you're under a consent decree, y- you would probably have to do that, which we're not. Um, it's not mandated by the state, and we, and simply, you know, we, we're not having those complaints.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Uh, before we move on, I do, I'm going to give a little mini speech that I remember from uh, uh, from the past. And, and that is that uh, a large part of the success of our public safety department is not just our public safety department, but it's our residents. And it's the support of our residents for our uh, our officers. But importantly, it's the uh, uh, it's, it's our residents being the eyes and the ears. Uh, of our public safety effort, and we always encourage our residents. Um, if you see anything that uh, that concerns you. And we always encourage our residents, if you see anything that, that concerns you, no matter how minor, to call it in. We would rather respond as a city and as a public safety department to, to a minor concern and not miss anything that's major. And so I think that it's, I want to thank the residents for what their performance in this area in the past. And I think it's an important part of the success of our community in keeping our crime statistics low. So, thank you. My last speech. Thank you, Lieutenant Bostick. Let's move on to the next agenda item, the Great Lakes Water Services Contract. I'll ask the city manager to introduce this.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor Denner and City Council. So before you, you've got a lengthy contract from the Great Lakes Water Authority. So I'll provide a brief summary of that and the financial impact that this, signing this contract would take place. So Great Lakes Water Authority is asking the city to sign a thirty-year water services contract to improve their bond rating status. GLWA is a capital-intensive organization. Bond ratings are an important factor in reducing debt service for water and sewer financing. The bond ratings have improved in each of the four transactions with the bond market. The credit positive tangible benefits are significant when a majority of the member communities, that's the other communities that are involved with Great Lakes Water Authority, are operating within long-term contracts, contracts. Since 2016, the GLWA Board and Executive Leadership have maintained about an annual budget increase of like about two to three percent range. Interestingly enough, the only agreement that used to be DWSD Detroit Water and Sewer Department ever had with GPP is dated back to nineteen-twenty. While it discusses installation of water mains and a new connection Detroit system, it does not discuss terms or conditions related to water service to GPP. This model contract has regular contract re-opener terms. The first re-opener meetings could occur in year one, year two, and then every four years thereafter. The only member exclusivity in the contract occurs in Exhibit A, which is the service area maps in the back of your contract. So you'll see GK1, GK2, GK3. Those are our water areas, which GK1 is at Kirchville and Wayburn. GK2 is Jefferson and Wayburn. And GK3 is Barrington and Essex. Those are our main water feeds over there that GLWA measures water. And Exhibit B also is the unique water usage values that you'll see at the end of that contract. The contract negotiation process, process resolves around these two exhibits. The financial impact of this contract, Great Lakes Water Authority, they determine what Gross Point Park flat rate will be for the upcoming twelve months. That's effective our fiscal year of July first, twenty-one. The flat rate is charged regardless of how much water is used, and that is determined by the Great Lakes Water Authority. GLWA determines as well the flow for water based upon prior years using one thousand cubic feet of flow. And the rate is determined on the overall expenses of all the GLWA customers. So I'll break it down a little bit. I'll try and go as slow as possible for this. So our twenty-twenty flat rate in Gross Point Park was seventy-six thousand nine hundred dollars over twelve months. That, that costs the city a total of nine hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred. With the twenty-twenty-one flat rate by signing this contract, the water services would be at seventy-one, two hundred, so at eight fifty-four, four hundred, which is a decrease of sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars per year. The water flow rate, the twenty-twenty flow rate was at eleven dollars and four cents per, times fifty-nine thousand five hundred, based upon one thousand cubic feet, equaled six hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. The twenty-twenty-one flow rate with the water services contract would be reduced to ten dollars and twenty-five cents times fifty-five thousand six hundred MCF, which equals about five seventy or a decrease of eighty-six thousand dollars. Or taking the flow and the flat rate, a total of one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred eighty dollars that would decrease the water charges to the community. So if we look over the water flat and flow rate combined over the last two fiscal years and upcoming fiscal year that's in your, my memo to you, in nineteen and twenty, we had approximately about one point five million twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. We had a slight increase in twenty-twenty-one to one point five million thirty-five thousand. In the proposed contract, i-if it's signed this contract today, we would see a reduced cost down to about one point four million twenty-four, three hundred, or to say again, a hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred eighty dollars in reduced costs. So I know I said quite a bit. I would certainly, I think it'd be in the best interest of the city and council to consider this contract. This is something that all communities are signing with on Great Lakes Water Authority. And I believe it would be in our best interest to do so as well. The only thing that's different compared to other communities is the Exhibit A and B, which talks about the meters and the flows. Otherwise, the rest of the contract is the exact same for every community. So with that said, I would certainly hope to entertain a possible motion before discussion.
I'd like to, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve the contract as presented. Get a second, and then I have some comments. Support? I want to give a little bit of a historical perspective here. First of all, if we do adopt, if we do adopt this contract, and we do have a reduced amount projected next year, those projections would be taken into account during our budget process as we set water rates for, for going forward. So that, this, this is part of what informs the budget process that Finance Director Blahut and City Manager are going through. The other thing I want to comment on is a bit of history. As the city manager alluded to, we're one of the few, maybe the only, but certainly one of the few cities served by Great Lakes Water that do, that have not entered into a long-term contract. So why is that? If you go back early, earlier in my tenure as coun-on council, this was actually Detroit Water and Sewer Department. And during that time, there were a number of issues with, not the quality of the water, but the quality of, of, of management and the cost structure and so on that concerned a lot of communities. And so we held off on any, any new long-term contracts at that point. That did actually provide a catalyst for the council at that time to direct the administration to explore the possibility of other sources of water. And there were, there were two serious things looked at, and this is many years ago now, but two serious things looked at. One was the possibility of our own water system, since we have a, an excellent water supply just off our Windmill Point Park. And technology for water treatment is, is much more compact and easier to manage than it used to be, but it was still a big responsibility, as we all learned with Flint. Also, the, the other possibility that we, that was explored and financially was joining the, the Gross Point system that's run by Gross Point Farms, which also serves Gross Point City. That was looked at, but there were, it essentially is, is not feasible. And looking at the capital improvements that'd be required to accomplish that, the willingness of the farms to undertake that. And it, it became a hurdle, not only from an engineering standpoint, but it'd be cost prohibitive. So that brought us back to, to this. Now, all along, under the, the Water Department has been responsible, has a responsibility to service us with water. It's not like they can cut us off. But we had held off on signing this long-term contract because previous councils felt that we should keep our options open, given the history of, of our experiences. I personally don't believe that that is something that we should be doing going forward. I think that we've got not only a good source of clean, high-quality water, but also a dramatically better managed authority in the Great Lakes Water Authority, which has regional representation. So in my mind, it makes sense to enter into a long-term contract to protect our residents going forward, not only with the quality of the water, but also financially. It's, it's, it's a, it's an advantage to our residents down the road. So for that reason, I do support it, and that's why I made the motion. So there's my history lesson. Councilmember McConnell?
So yes, I can enjoy a little of that history with you, Mayor Denner, because I used to, as a reporter, write about the water rates every year. And that was, of course, the most, a lot of reader response I got on that one, not in a good way, of course. And I do appreciate it being cost prohibitive when you start talking about establishing your own system and you cited the sort of real-time example with Flint. I just had a couple of questions. One is that in the cover, it talks about a thirty-year contract, but it does pretty quickly talk about automatic renewal at the ten-year mark. So I just wanted to clarify if you could speak to that. You did talk about some, I think, chances to review in the first three years as well. So if you can just speak to those two things. And then the last one is to ask if, if we have someone from the city participating in the One Water Partnership.
So and to answer your last question, we do have OHM advisors at times attend meetings that are of extreme importance regarding the water and sewer meetings, so that is happening. Sorry, can you go on to the other question?
The other one was about the, the automatic renewal after thirty years for an additional ten years, two point two on page six.
I wonder if I'll be city manager in another thirty years, I could work on this. But, you know, I still think it would be in our best interest, you know, to move forward with this. But yes, you are correct. It shall automatically renew at the conclusion of the thirty-year term for additional ten-year term, unless the party provides written notification to the other party, you know, for termination or not to, I should say, to intent not to renew this contract.
That's, that, that sort of thing, I believe, is pretty standard in most, most long contracts with auto-automatic renewal provisions. There's always an opt-out, but if you don't do anything, it just continues. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, just a couple of questions and comments. And one question for City Manager, I assume that this contract has been reviewed by our city attorney? And, okay, I, I assume that. Also, just so it's clear for the residents, all cost savings will be passed on to the residents. And, yes. And then, yeah, I saw the same thing with the, the thirty-year, the automatic renewal. It, it looks like, now I lost my, my place there, but it looks like they are required to notify us at the twenty-five-year mark that we're up for renewal. Yeah, I, I think most of us won't be here at that time. But I, I don't think that there's a lot of competition or other options out there either. So I, I'm, I'm supporting, I'm in support of, of entering into this contract.
Jim will still be here.
Councilmember Hodges?
You're right.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. I think, you know, some of the rationale for a thirty-year contract probably has to do with giving the greatest amount of flexibility for financing because it would align with debt retirement and needs that I would believe the authority would have. And, and that would be to our advantage too, because that's going to result in additional efficiencies from a financial standpoint. So I, I'm assuming that that's part of the rationale for a thirty-year term. If that's not the case, the city manager can let us know. But I think that therefore is another point and reason for committing to that term.
You are correct, Councilmember Hodges.
Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question for you, City Manager Seisland. GW, GLWA is the bulk of our water bill, correct? It seems like everyone's
That's correct.
Yeah, is there any way I can get? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I, my bad. I was just going to say, you know, you have water and sewer that make up, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we've, we've had some questions over the years about GL, you know, the, the cost of why it's so big on our bill. I'm wondering if there's any way that you can email me an answer on that, and then I can share it with a couple of residents that have been asking. Just, I've, I've heard three or four different answers, and it, it just seems a little strewn, so I, I don't want to take time up today.
So I'll, I'll touch on it real quick. There's a couple of things that we've actually been looking into. And, and this all goes into play with infrastructure, how important it is regarding our updates. So, you know, the, the flow rate is the one that, you know, measures how much water we use, you know. And so depending on whether we use less water or more water, that really affects our rates. And so, you know, over time, you know, our Public Works Department is always review, you know, trying to look into our infrastructure to see if there's any leaks, if there's any areas that need to be replaced. And certainly, that's something that's very important that we need to look into to make sure we don't have water that's going to waste as well. We do have a lot of older meters that are not measuring correctly for that charge. So that's something as well. I mean, I just talked to my Public Works Supervisor, Assistant One, Tom Jenny. He actually worked on a couple of homes that we had meters going back to the sixties. So, you know, there, there are some updates that we're working on, and, you know, as we're going into homes and fixing these. You know, and something we always identify with GLWA too, is making sure that when we're doing any hydrant flushing, that we, you know, notify Great Lakes Water Authority so they don't see a spike in our day usage, so that they don't charge us for that. And so those are the little things that, you know, over time are going to make a big impact regarding that flow rate. So hope that helped a little bit. Be happy to discuss more.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll follow up with an email to, to share some of the concerns I've heard. I appreciate your, your insight.
I've got one more historical perspective to share. And that's, and that's that historically, a much larger percentage of the charge was based on flow rate, and a much smaller percentage of the charge is based on flat rate. Under the Great Lakes Water Authority, that, that trend has reversed to have much, a much greater percentage of the, of the charge based on the flat rate. And that is really to provide financial stability for the Great Lakes Water Authority and is part of the strategy for being able to ensure debt service on long-term bonds, for example. So that's been a trend that, that changed the structure of the water rate that most people wouldn't have been aware of.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I'm, you were in the meeting as well about two years ago, and I can't remember his name, but I brought it up that St. Clair, she owns a house in St. Clair Shores, and their prices are a third of, or a quarter of what we pay here. So I just wanted to get a proper answer on that, so, and try to understand, because my water bill is high too, and I, everyone else's is. So we want to see how we can fix that, but it looks like we can't adjust that at all.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, are we ready to call the roll? We are. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fluet?
All right, yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. We have approved the contract so that the administration can complete the execution of the contract. The last item of business before we get to council comment and then public comment is Alma's Kitchen support. This recently came to our attention, and the city manager and I agreed that we should bring it to the attention of council. City manager, would you like to provide the introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So I'll, I'll provide the summary update that came to my attention, and I wanted to let council know and certainly get your support in going to the State Liquor Control Commission. Alma Kitchen, which is on Nottingham and Mack Avenue, submitted an application for a liquor license back in September of twenty-twenty with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. They are currently awaiting a church hearing that, or there's a hearing because they, within so many feet, there's a state law that they have to have a separate hearing in order to get their liquor license. I believe it's three hundred feet. That's in proximity to Alma's location. That's in proximity to Alma's location, and a date is yet to be determined. That church is located on the Mack Avenue side of Detroit. The property that Alma Kitchen is housed in has had a license for 30-plus years by different businesses. I'm sure the experienced members of council know each and every one of those businesses that have been involved there. And so with that said, I've been in touch with Jenny Betcher of the Gross Point Chamber of Commerce, you know, to try and solicit letters of support from the chamber and from the city and area businesses to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission during their hearing. And so what I'm humbly asking you, Mayor and city council, is considering a motion directing myself with your support to draft a letter to the MLCC conveying our backing of Alma Kitchen's liquor license, talking with Gary Mu, who is the owner of it. This is something that certainly would be very helpful for his business. He has invested quite a bit of money into the Almas. And if you haven't had their food yet, it is delicious. I highly encourage you to try it. And so I'm simply asking for your support in writing a letter to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and hoping I can get a round robin of council to sign this letter with me.
So moved. Does there support?
Or?
I think that we all want Alma's Kitchen to to prosper. And there's, you know, the the historical perspective is that I'm not aware of any problems that have ever been at that location under its various owners related to liquor liquor issue. So I feel confident that that's an appropriate location for an establishment that includes a liquor license. Councilmember McConnell?
I actually went opening day, Nick. The food is amazing, so no argument there. I had the pleasure of meeting the owner as well as staff, so I'm glad that they're there. The only question I had was mentioning this church hearing. Do you know the date of the church hearing?
Checking with the Liquor Control Commission, I do not have that date yet, nor do they.
Okay. The only concern I would have is, you know, I guess we don't know what the the church is going to say, and it would be nice to know that before you wrote a letter, but, yeah, that's the only concern I have.
Okay.
Okay.
We we have a motion, we have a we have a second. We ready to call the roll? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes, motion passes. I certainly hope that we're able to, with Alma's Kitchen's success with the Liquor Control Commission, we need a viable business in that looking. And I've also tried their tried their food, and they're doing a terrific job, so. I look forward to their long-term success. That moves us on to the next item on the agenda council comment. Counsel, do you have any any comments? Councilmember McConnell?
Yes, so I have, I already mentioned the vaccination town hall. I just wanted to mention that again. That's Wednesday at 6 o'clock. We'll be joined by the top health officials for Wayne County. It's with Wayne County Commissioner Tim Colleen. The Dr. Floyd, who will be participating, is the one who will be administering the process for vaccinations in the points, so. But also, you know, a void of information, you start to fill in the blanks, and that's not a good thing. So we really hope that we can help inform residents and answer their questions. So I hope that people turn out for that. And then I wanted to also mention and put before you for further consideration and future meeting that I'm pleased to have worked with Councilmember Hodges as we try to map out a plan for the council as a whole to collaborate on a couple things. So it's still sort of a fluid document because we need everyone's input. But we talked about some internal and external goals that we could work toward as a council. I think I've spoken with almost everyone here about it. But in particular, since no one likes the word retreat, although I heard a new term, which is advanced. I know Michelle liked that one. And then also, we just sort of framed it as maybe a brown bag series. So a couple of things that we're hoping to do, if we can get folks to support, one would be civility discussion. Councilmember Reed shared a contact that she had heard at MML. They've actually offered to do a session for free. I think that'd be a great place to start. And the second one, I talked to city manager Seisland about, is like a half-day session from MML that would deal with goal setting and some other things. It's half their normal rate because we could do it virtually. So I'm hoping that perhaps at our next meeting, we can devise a way to to move forward on these things. There's additional stuff that we could flesh out later. But I do, I hope that we can try to to unite around these, at least these two items, if not more. I don't know if ever Hodges had anything to add.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. A couple of items. A school board update. The school board is set to vote tonight. Maybe they already have to extend the early childhood program at Trombley for the 2021, 2022 school year. So that's good news that we'll have continued activity at Trombley as a school. Also, the Marina Subcommittee will be meeting via Zoom this Wednesday, the 10th, at 7:00 PM. And so interested residents who would like to join should go to the city website for that. And then I don't want to take up too much time, but I just really want to briefly comment. Stand my continued support to the Dingus family. We saw our our community come together in support of them, and it was really a beautiful thing. And I think we should build on that as a community, I think as a council. We all have more in common than what separates us. And so, you know, we're hearing a lot of comments, including tonight, and there's some division. I think we all agree that what happened to her family was horrific. And I support her, and I want to build on that good feeling that we had that Sunday when we all came together. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Councilmember Fluid?
Going back to what we had talked about earlier with the DDA and the Tifa Assistance Grants Programs, which I am appreciative of, I'm really glad we were able to do that. But something we had talked about at one point and never really came back to was whether the city was going to be able to do something similar for the businesses, just the handful of businesses we have that are not actually in either of those districts. You know, to the to one end, we have Fairfax Market. And then up on on Mack outside of the Tifa District, we do have a handful of businesses going toward CADU. So, you know, did did the city ever look into that and determine if we could do any kind of similar program for those businesses similar to what the DDA and the Tifa provided to cover the businesses, the COVID losses that were suffered by the businesses within those districts?
So in regards to DDA and Tifa, you know, unfortunately, we cannot provide those businesses with their assistance. However, there are mechanisms, other mechanisms looking into, you know, trying to get other business support that maybe we can pull together resources and working with our philanthropic community, certainly looking into areas that we can, you know, assist these businesses as well. There's areas like that that are being explored at this time.
So that is something that's being worked on?
I'm working on it, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor Danner. I'm expecting, as you all are, that we will be moving into in-person meetings within the coming months. So we might want to be sure we can provide some kind of remote viewing and participation and consider that opportunity. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, you made an announcement last week regarding your intention not to pursue your seat. And I would just like to thank you for your 12 years of service and your leadership toward getting us to a point of distinction status. You've been a great asset to the community, and I know I've enjoyed working with you in the short time I've been on council. And then thirdly.
By the way, it's 18 years, but it's not over yet. So, but it but that's sort of political, and I just assume leave that aside until much later in the in my tenure.
Well, that's because you're a graceful leader, but I think you deserve recognition. And hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to do that properly at some point. Thirdly, and I'll keep it simple regarding the issue before us tonight. I'm I'm certainly hearing and seeing it all. And I'd like to sincerely thank our residents that have given us input and provided the healthy tension that I believe leads to good decision-making. I'm very grateful to this community for standing tall on behalf of our Dingus family, and we are exactly that, family. Thank you to the city manager for working to transform the hiring process and for demonstrating a sincerity of heart. And lastly, a colleague quoted Herman Melville recently, and I think it resonates here tonight. And that quote is, "We cannot live only for ourselves. A thousand fibers connect us. I believe each and every one of us can make a difference, and I'm committed to that, as I know we all are." Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So Councilmember Rowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on Ms. Hodges's comments there, I want to thank you for your efforts here as mayor. I've only witnessed you as mayor and appreciate where you brought us, and there's more to come on that. I also want to thank the residents and our community for showing the world who GPP is and who we can be moving forward in the future as we sit together for the Dingus family. I'd like to add our to our April agenda, a discussion around taking the diversity-inclusion initiative and making an official committee, whether this be a council-run committee or resident-run initiative with council support is something I look forward to hear your thoughts on. I know the council has shown support, and I've received a lot of positive feedback. I look forward to continuing getting our city on track with the current state of the world with this important step. So I'll email Nick and copy the attorneys to see what our next steps are, and I'll talk to council member, all the council members, actually, to see what their thoughts are to how we can move forward on this. I also want to share my thoughts to follow up on some things I've heard today and I've seen via email. Personally, I've never attacked or diminished a donor. I also appreciate our city and its amenities immensely. If you have been attending council meetings, you'll understand that I strictly have trouble with the processes that have been used by us, the city leaders, for some of these initiatives. I want to keep the city on track to always keep in mind our residents as our focus. And I want to reiterate that I've never attacked or diminished our public safety, nor have I heard anyone on council attack our department. I appreciate what they do for our safety and interactions with them weekly, many times on my front porch, sometimes in their offices. This does not mean that we're lacking in some important and relevant mindsets around diversity, as it's become known that we have never hired anyone from non-white parties. We need to get this on track, and that is something no one can deny. I have never stated or discussed opening the parks with with non-residents, with anyone on council or at a council meeting. We've got a lot of emails about this, and I'm unsure where this is coming from. I want to get that on track so we, so because of all the emails and phone calls we have about this, I think some of you are falling for scare tactics, scare tactics from some individuals, sometimes our local media, sometimes anonymous, sometimes both. I ask you to vet your information and know your sources and understand what their intentions are. I want you to know that I'm the same person many of you elected. I'm still pushing for transparency in resident engagement, and we got some great engagement tonight. I continue to, I continue to encourage you to stay involved. It's important for all of us to understand what's going on with the city, and hearing from you is what's really important. As many of you reached out to me about things that have put us in the spotlight, I welcome a conversation with any of you on anything you hear that bothers you or your questions about. I'm available for anything at any time, and I think all our council members are as well. And I'm focused on the residents' best interests always, some whose voices are not accepted as others, but are valid. And again, I want to say thank you to to all the council members here. It's a pleasure working with you all. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Well, almost done. Mayor Pro Tim Robson?
I won't be long, but I think I want to to echo what others have said to and for the Dingus family, how much we care about them and how concerned we are about them. And how I'm very proud of our community and how we have gathered around them. And that will continue for a long time. And we worry about you, we're concerned about you. I think about you every day, Mrs. Dingus. And where you're at and your pain and the difficulty that you went through. And I'm one of maybe 11,000 citizens that feel that way. And then I just briefly want to talk about the city of Gross Point Park. A lot of emotional discussions going on. Alls I can say is that the city of Gross Point Park 2021 is a beautiful city with beautiful people. It is not a racist city. Gross Point Park is the most diverse of all the Gross Points. You look around, you can obviously see we have a very diverse city council. Based on November's election, we have a very progressive community as well. So I I do feel bad when I get email talking about histories and people taking on a broad brush, people stereotyping. That that needs to stop. We're a great community and will continue to be. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that closes council comment, and we're going to move on to public comment, non-agenda. I'll turn it over to the administration to manage.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Danner. So I do have several written public comments that I will read for you to listen. So give me one second. My first written public comment is from Mr. Giuseppe Palazzolo. "City council, I'm a fairly new resident to Gross Point Park, approximately five years. One of the reasons why I moved to Gross Point Park was because of the schools and safe community, the outstanding parks and the overall family experience. I know that some of this has come up with a price tag of higher taxes, but we chose it, it would ultimately be well worth it. Now to hear that the parks will be potentially open to non-residents and the SCOP Center and the Manugian Gallery in jeopardy is very disturbing to me. Public safety is very important to me and my family, and quite frankly, I do not understand the direction that this council is heading. All the reasons why we chose to move to Gross Point Park is potentially now evaporating. This will be an excuse by people to leave Gross Point Park, in my opinion. I hope that sound and proper decisions are made so we can continue to enjoy the treasure of Gross Point Park." This comment comes from Mr. Tim Kolar. "Coming off the success of the Chili Fest, it is very exciting to see that another event is taking place this coming weekend in the park. This is a positive trend based on the observation of those in attendance. That Chili Fest is something a community at large has been clamoring for. Hope that this momentum continues as we utilize our social district, not only in Kirchville but on Charlevoix. Speaking with numerous businesses on Charlevoix after the event announcement, especially since they are part of the Tifa District, they all would have welcomed the opportunity to have Charlevoix shut down to expand their capacity on the 13th. I'm assuming here, but given the sponsorship by the Gross Point News and the businesses involved in the event, on Kirchville, whose properties are owned by the same ownership group as Gross Point News, a mere week notice and no mention of the event in the city manager's report in February, must assume this was an impromptu event that we're going to, ownership group organized. While appreciative and it's exciting to see planning events, advertising, communicating time and effort, GPP is one of the best resources around for successful events in Chad Craig, whose leadership, organization skills, and efforts allowed for Chili Fest to be a huge success. Would encourage the city manager and councils to encourage any event planners using city resources to bring Chad in as early as possible." This comment comes from Daniel and Tina Griffin. "We are new residents of Gross Point Park, but both of us have lived in the Gross Points our entire lives, 65-plus years each. We enjoy the many amenities in GPP, including the outstanding service of the public safety department, excellent schools, beautiful parks, recreational facilities, movie theaters, restaurants, and shopping. Therefore, we feel all members of the city council should act on behalf of the majority of its taxpaying residents. The policies that are set forth in the city bylaws and city charter should be followed in order to foster unity and consistency. The safety of our residents is vital. We fully support and appreciate our public safety department, and field chief Bostak should be highly considered to continue in his position. The diversity of our many residents is currently in place. Low-income housing would not be a good fit for further improving GPP for the taxpaying residents. The many parks and recreational facilities should be open to only taxpaying residents and their guests. Any deviation to this policy dilutes the investments of taxpaying residents. The generosity of our donors should be welcomed and honored. We should continue to maintain current gifts and facilitate future gifts, such as the SCOP Center, Manugian Gallery, with great appreciation, again, from the taxpaying residents. There is a reason Gross Point Park has been named one of the most desirable places to live. We have an invested interest in GPP and being taxpaying residents, and we don't want this all to change." This comment comes from Al Shaheen. "As a park resident for 30-plus years, somebody who has spent his childhood in GPP and somebody who moved back to GPP to raise his family, I have had the joy of experiencing the many wonderful attributes specific to the Gross Point community." I have had the joy of experiencing the many wonderful attributes specific to the Gross Point community, especially Gross Point Park. I work almost exclusively in the GP community, and what we have is unique and special. Although I believe in change to keep our community evolving, I find it insulting and disrespectful to the many wonderful community members by even thinking we should open our community amenities to outside residents. Furthermore, inhibiting people from giving back to the community is a total slap in the face to them and what they have accomplished in their lifetime. Those two core principles are what make any community special and unique in of itself. That core principle is what made GPP voted one of the best places to live in the country. Our job as business leaders, community leaders, and council members is to manage our ever-changing world within our community. Our job is not meant to reinvent the wheel. As we do our job, we must always respect our community and the opportunities that were given to us. Please do your job, and please do not disrespect our community, because right now you are not doing your job. You are certainly not respecting your community." This comment comes from Molly McDermott. "Dear City Council, please take a moment to be grateful for what we have. We are blessed to live in a beautiful community, lucky to have two amazing parks, and anxiously await the SCOP Center, Manugian Gallery. I have lived in the park for almost 50 years and commend and treasure our Public Safety Department. They are committed, diligent, and have done an amazing job to protect all of us. Our taxes and generous donors have provided us with these amenities. Why would you consider opening the parks to non-residents? Use good judgment. Be sensible. Do not allow a small group to be disruptive. Thank you for your consideration." This comment comes from Bob Lucas and Kay Agnew. "As a longtime resident of Gross Point Park, I am disturbed by many of the actions and intentions of the city council. The restrictive donor policy is ludicrous. The past donations have enhanced our city with great amenities at our parks, theaters, fitness facilities, skating rinks, and the Tomcats Community Center. This type of civic activity should be embraced and welcomed. The council also needs to let the city manager manage the city and quit interfering in micromanaging. They also need to be responsible for their actions at council meetings. They do not run on and on, show some decorum. As a resident, I enjoy our great parks, which should keep them available to residents only. They are maintained by our tax dollars and should not be open to the general public. I see absolutely no reason that our current interim Public Safety Chief should not be a strong candidate for the full-time position. We have a very good Public Safety Department, which should be lauded for its work." This comment comes from Mr. Tom Skeen. "The individual who displayed a KKK flag recently has caused quite an uproar in the city, even getting national news, is unacceptable and should be rightly condemned. The community and many outsiders marched in solidarity to the family whose window looked out of the neighbor's window if the flag was inserted. Many will say the individual was in the right to free speech. The Wayne County Prosecutor's Office appears to agree since they are not issuing any citations. Again, I do not condone the flag. However, many residents and members of the council have short memories or were not residents in 2013 when a man living in Gross Point Park murdered his neighbor on Wayburn. According to news reports, he moved into the attic of the apartment where he was renting. Was there a march in solidarity to the atrocious act? No. Were reasonable steps taken by the council to try and prevent this from happening? Again, yes. Were all renters and/or their relatives blamed? No. This again was an individual. Gross Point Park is a fabulous city, and residents should be proud. These two acts do not reflect the community as a whole. It's time to get back to the day-to-day running of our city and quit focusing on political issues or personal causes." This comment comes from Mr. Anthony DeLuca. "In 2002, I moved to GPP from New York City and rented a flat in the 1400 block of Wayburn. In 2013, I purchased a home in 1300 block of Wayburn. During that period of time, that area of the park was not like it is today. There was a lot of crime. Thankfully, Gross Point Park was always responsive. In 2005, I purchased a home..." You know, actually, I think this resident already spoke. Yeah, this one's already been spoken. This comment comes from David Van Elslander of Three Mile. "I've come to be grateful for many things about GPP. Some are our Public Safety Department, our city manager, and until recently, our city council. First, put a cap on meeting lengths. Endless meetings are counterproductive. Recent behavior by some of our council members, who seem empowered by a small but vocal group of activists held bent on creating divisiveness in our community, has me concerned. Where is this coming from? I've seen comments from some of these activists presuming that we are a community that embraces racism and rejects diversity. How ridiculous. One of the things I'm most grateful for and proud of is our city's diversity and inclusion. It's part of what makes raising children here and living here so special. We have fantastic amenities. Many made possible, but the generosity of philanthropic-minded residents we've given selflessly to make improvements for all of us to enjoy. There are rumblings of adopting a restrictive donor policy. Again, ridiculous. We have a beautiful art gallery and performing arts center. The works because of the two very generous donors. Our marina is in dire need of an upgrade. Where will the money come from? In closing, opening parks to non-residents would be a disaster. Stop that silly conversation. Get out of the way and let the city manager do his job and hire the Public Safety Chief." This comment comes from Mark Reeth. "As a proud resident and business owner in Gross Point Park, I am writing to express my concern over actions being considered by the council. The first is to offer strong support of our Public Safety Department and ensuring new hires to be decided by our city manager, Nick Sizeland, as stated in the charter. The Public Safety Department is one of the main reasons to live and operate a business in the park. Secondly, our current and future amenities like the amazing parks, marina, and the SCOP Center, Manugian Gallery are the exact reasons we live in GPP and pay taxes. Opening up the parks, marina, and non-residents should never be considered. If you want to use the parks, then move to our wonderful city. Lastly, there is no time for divisiveness among the city council because of a small group looking to disrupt what has been built over decades. Five-hour council meetings and micromanaging the city government will only create more disruption and in turn less effective outcomes. Let the city government run as hired and stated in the city charter. City council is in place to support them and the community at large. We have a wonderful city, so let's make sure it remains that way long into the future. Thank you for your time and commitment." This comment comes from Mr. Doug Turnbull of Lake Point. "I'm writing to you today to express my support of the Gross Point Park Department of Public Safety and concerns about the blatant disregard for the city council's code of ethics by several members of city council. I grew up at the corner of Barrington, Jefferson, and have spent the majority of my life living in Gross Point Park. I was angry last month to learn the racist act of some idiot on Wayburn. This act is clearly not representing the community nor its Public Safety Department. These brave men and women risk their life every day to make Gross Point Park one of the greatest cities in the U.S. I have listened to council meetings since my wife, Jamie Ray Turnbull, became involved with the SCOP Center, and I am dumbfounded at the level of unprofessionalism. Council members making recommendations on issues that the city charter clearly states they have no part in. What is motivating members of the city council to take an obstructionist position on so many positive projects of the community and alienating members of the business community and generous residents? It is concerning that members of the city council are approaching logical businesses and telling them that they should give part of their land to the city or telling business owners that certain projects won't help their business at all. I can only hope this is a wake-up call for our community and city council that we can work together on building our community and not tearing it apart." This comment comes from Gary and Janet Van Elslander on Whittier. "It's difficult to address issues so emotionally charged for a small but extremely vocal portion of the community. Recent events have created concern with our governmental processes. Our city manager was hired to do a job representing the interest of all of GPP with oversight and advice from city council. Instead, what we're observing is a council whose intent is micromanagement rather than oversight. This is not a formula for good governance. Beyond this intense scrutiny, proposals that discourage what has been, up until now, very generous donor giving seem to threaten benefits that make the park the envy of other municipalities. Additionally, other proposals like opening our parks to non-residents cause us to question what we're trying to accomplish. Maybe we're missing something, but why would we want to do that? Taxpayer dollars support these amenities. I ask that the community at large take stock of the conditions in our beautiful city and consider whether or not each change that is being put forth is an improvement, does really constitute betterment, or simply satisfies the agenda of a group of activists that believe they alone hold the key to a better city. Certainly, copying and pasting a letter that speaks of outrage and discontent is not the work of an informed citizenry. Let us not blindly follow the loudest voice. We'd rather do the hard work of becoming informed. We should not let a single group decide what will and should constitute a better city for everyone." Mayor Danner, that's all my written public comments.
Thank you, Leah. Do we have verbal comments in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor Danner. Yes, we do. So the first thing I'm going to do is share the three-minute timer. And the first person in the queue is Anna. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, please, and state your full name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Anna Sigmarino, Gross Point Park. The Gross Point News article regarding the donors read like a Tucker Carlson entertainment piece, meant to address the ill-informed while insulting the intelligence of the rest of us, and it was an absolute disgrace. We all see how this city has been run the last five years under Mayor Danner versus his predecessor, Palmer Heenan. Backroom deals without notice to the public, and then the surprise vote at the 11th hour. In Gross Point, we know the difference between being wealthy versus being rich, old money versus new money, true city benefactors who generously give to the community versus those who spend money to advance their special interests. We know the generosity of Dr. Clark Okowski and his genuine desire to build a space to bring together families and all residents for joy and entertainment versus the SCAP Theater, exclusive for adults only, where the donation amount did not adequately cover the cost and left taxpayers holding the bill. We know the generosity of Mr. Paul Evans to build the activity center and the fairness in asking users to support the operating cost at a reasonable price versus the SCAP and Manugian Trolley, which offers free rides to bring folks from the city and the parks to the park business district, but then turns around and charges my family $70 to go see the Christmas lights. The trolley is a cool thing for the points, but we know what's really behind it. The dog park inside Patterson is the worst project Mayor Danner approved. It'll fence off more than one-half acre of our parkland, which every resident, child, and our guest can use, and give exclusive rights to the 1% of residents who own something the rest of us don't, destroying our green space, damaging the land, demanding that all park users accept the annoyance of barking, defecating, and fornicating dogs while putting residents and children at risk of harm. We're all going to have to pay for the operating, maintenance, and repair costs after 24 months, while the city loses revenue from decreased grandmurray property taxes and fewer rentals of the lodge, in addition to assuming liability from injuries due to dog attacks. Now, the Gross Point News is asking why new donors are viewed with skepticism because Backers Landscape thinks the dog park is simply adding a cheap fence around a bit of land, while the city thinks we'll just sit back and watch our land be taken away from us and give it to the 1%, while forcing all of us to pay the cost, assume the health and safety risk, and reduce the quality and enjoyment of Patterson. And just because a donation is offered to us does not mean that we ought to accept it. I and many others do not support a dog park inside Patterson. Shame on Mayor Danner for his secret backroom deal, giving away our shared land without proper engagement or asking us if we want to assume the cost while claiming it's a benefit to all and a generous donation. Now, Gross Point Park residents are too intelligent for that. And if the art center and other future projects funded by the rich or anything like the adult theater, the putting green, and the dog park in terms of exclusivity and increased cost to the residents, then yes. We residents demand that a donor fill out a simple five-page document, have the project added to the master plan for a democratic vote, where we decide together as a community if the project supports our values, is beneficial to our community, and is something we're all willing to pay for."
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Brian. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, and please go ahead.
Thank you, Leah. Brian Bosberg, resident of Gross Point Park. I just want to comment on Councilmember Robson's statement that Gross Point Park is not a racist city as much as the Jedana Dingus and her family are residents and members of our community, and as much as the hundreds of people that showed up to march against racism and against the things that happened to the Dingus family are part of this community. We also have to remember that the neighbors of the Dingus family are also members of our community. And so to say that members of our community are not racist, to say that our community is not racist is simply proven untrue by the actions of the Dingus family's neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Cheryl. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, and please state your name and city of residency. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Leah. My name is Cheryl Denman. I'm a Gross Point Park homeowner, and I'm celebrating 30 years. At the Planning Commission Visioning Session, I made a comment inquiring about what Councilmember Reed had done as part of the ad hoc committee to keep Trombley open as a public elementary school. I was immediately attacked for it. I guess my husband and I will have to deal with that, because it seems to be the pattern in practice by some council members and their supporters. But to then have a complaint made with our Public Safety Department accusing me of bullying seems borderline illegal. Councilmember Reed, are you in agreement with that conduct that is apparently being carried out in your name? Is resident participation and comment only acceptable from your vocal supporters like Mr. Greg Donnelly and Mrs. Mary Rulo? Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Greg. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Greg Donnelly, and I have been a Gross Point Park resident for seven years, though that shouldn't matter more. Tonight's meeting has been a masterclass in structural racism. We have a long way to go to become the diverse and inclusive of community that we aspire to be. Low-income residents pay taxes, too. Often, they pay a larger portion of their incomes in taxes than high-income residents do. Homeowners don't deserve a bigger voice than renters. Visitors who come to our restaurants and small businesses, who might themselves someday become residents, don't deserve to be treated as less than current residents. Donors with deep pockets don't deserve a bigger voice than other residents. And black residents under attack don't deserve to have the police buy curtains for their attackers right next door. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Jedana. Going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you so much for all of the support we've received. There were several very disturbing comments tonight, people calling people activists where they're just concerned citizens, just like everybody else. All the buzzwords, divisive. There was no march after the murder on Wayburn. What does that have to do with what happened to me? That there was no march. Those two things can be true at the same time. You can be outraged by racism and outraged by murder. Those two things are not mutually exclusive. So I think that that's ridiculous. Councilmember Robson, love your enthusiasm, but there is racism in this community. It is alive and well, as evidenced by the comments on this call tonight. Our community is changing for the better, even if some resident donors and city employees don't like it. It is clear by the comments on this call tonight that some people in the community think that the police department should remain all white. My position is that the police department needs to reflect the community that it serves. That means that the police department must be diverse. As we heard on the call earlier this evening, some residents believe it's acceptable for a symbol of hatred, racism, and ethnic intimidation such as the news to be found in our schools as long as it's small, like the cord from a window blind. Participants also made it clear that they were okay with my family being targeted terrorism. I guess we're collateral damage, as long as the parks remain private and the police department remains all white. So there is, you know, make no illusion here, folks. I appreciate the support that I receive from the community. I really do. But there's no sense in pretending that this community is about diversity and inclusion, because it isn't. People have made their comments very, very clear. Several people said, you know, I really hate what happened to the Dinguses. But, and when you say but, in the case of everything that you said before it. So people have made it very, very clear that this is unfortunate, and I know that everybody didn't do this. I was the first one who said that. Everybody didn't do this. This was an act by one person, but it's an act by one person who grew up in this community. And this community has supported systemic racism, and you still support systemic racism. So you need to own it and try to work to change it. And insinuating that or saying that the Michigan, someone from the Michigan, the Diversity Roundtable is an outsider. That organization is based in the state of Michigan. Gross Point is not an island. Okay, it's not an island. This is a community in the state of Michigan. There's an organization that fights... racism and discrimination within the state of Michigan. You just have to do better. This is not a perfect community. I'm not a perfect person. None of us are perfect. You have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Richard. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead.
Hello, Ms. Leah. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead.
Yes. I'm the guy who referred to the blinds cords as not a noose. So that makes me a racist. I'm the guy that got pulled over by the black cop for giving a black lady a ride home. Does that mean all Detroit cops are racist? You know, he grew up in Detroit. That means he was allowed to be a racist because of the community. Nobody allowed this guy to be a racist. He chose to do this on his own. He was an individual who acted very badly. And I'm pretty sure that he acted very badly for many years. I don't know how you acted towards him. My wife has been in public safety for over twenty years, as is my brother's been in public safety for over twenty years. Neighbors do very bad things. I don't know why it happened. It happened, but that doesn't make me a racist. When we, when we use the words activist, we're bad guys. But you can throw out the word racist and all of a sudden the conversation ends. If you want the conversation to end right now, just throw out the word racist because that's what you do. Now, I sat through that diversity and inclusion meeting and I wanted to tell the story about working in Gross Point and working in Detroit with the youth. For many years, I donated my time to help the Detroit youth as a volunteer coach because I loved those kids. I moved to Gross Point south and I coached football there voluntarily. I gave up my salary because I love those kids. But because I don't believe that everybody in Gross Point Park is a racist, that makes me a racist. You can ask any kid I helped in Detroit what I was like. I remember after football, I'd make my son take out his math book and help the kids with their math because they were kind of not as advanced as my son was in math. And I thought I was doing a good thing, but I guess I was just a racist. And that's, I guess, what I'll always be if I don't always agree with, with this activism in giving away the ranch. I'm sorry about that, but if that's what I am, that's what I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Denner, that is the end of public comment.
Mr. Mary muted.
Yeah, I just, yeah. Thank you, Leah. That closes public comment and non-agenda items. I move that we adjourn. Is there a support?
Support.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Patja?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fluet?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, council, and let's all think about ways to make the April meeting shorter. Have a, have a good rest of the week. Take care.
Night.